Yeah, true.
I never need a microphone.
Alrighty then, hello. It is 7:09. I would like to call the Carver School Committee Meeting of June 13th, 2022 to order if everyone could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Sorry for the technical difficulties. It's never boring at our meetings. We had a very long agenda, so you're all welcome to stay till the very end if you'd like, but you're also welcome to leave when your portion of our meeting is over. So no pressure to stay, but you're welcome to. So, and with that, we're going to start with some recognitions.
Yeah, I'd just like to remind everybody that this meeting is also being held virtually in accordance with the government Massachusetts March 12th 2020 Order suspending certain provisions of open meeting law. Members of the public can access this meeting in three ways: live via Zoom, live on Area 58 cable, and also live in the room. We're glad to see so many people live in the room this evening. So we're actually excited to start with a recognition of our fire department interns. So they're here in the front row. And so one of the great partnerships that we as a school committee have developed within the town.
They can't hear us on Zoom. They're saying we're muted on Zoom?
Dylan, the same way.
Sorry, my apologies for interrupting. Can you hear us now? Can you please comment in the chat? Thank you. Okay, great. They can hear us. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Dylan. All right. So we're excited that one of the partnerships the school's developed is with the Carver Fire Department. And really, I want to take a moment just to thank the members of the fire department for all their time and effort that they gave to our interns. So we're excited this evening to have Chief Weston is here with us in the back of the room. He's going to wave to the crowd. And Assistant Deputy Fire Chief Boyle is here as well. And so he's going to come up and talk a little bit about the internship program and some of the things that our students had the opportunity to do. And then we also want to recognize each of our students. So if they could just rise where I call their name, that'd be great. Ryan Mazzilli, Zach Aronimo, Kevin Aducci, Michael Crump, Brandon Zanaboti, and Keegan Okada. So Brandon, Brandon, if you can hear the teacher. So, you know, Deputy Boyle, we invite you up. And obviously, any of the guys who want to come as well, if they want to hop in. And then we have a great video we're going to show of some of the exploits that they went through as part of their fire department internship.
Thank you, Mr. Neath. Test one, two, test, test. Do you hear me? All right. Are we on Zoom? Can we hear us on Zoom?
We're all good. Everybody can hear us everywhere.
Townwide PA system. All right. Hello, everybody. It's really an honor to be here in front of the committee tonight. It's really an honor to work with these guys and to have them be recognized. They've certainly had a lot of applause the last few weeks. There's been a lot of accomplishments. And, you know, after a few years of COVID, it's really been great to see some of this recognition again after not having it for a while. One of the primary goals of this intern program is really to try to recruit people to join the Carver Fire Department. We're an on-call fire department, which means our 80-plus members are all members of our community. We all live here in town. We have parents. We have students. Some of them, a lot of our current firefighters came from Carver Middle High School. So our job is to perpetuate that and continue to have a successful on-call system. And this is our farm system. These are our rookies here. So we're trying to take all the romance that's involved with the fire service, of which it's plentiful. America loves the fire department. All we need to do is take that system, show them a little bit of it, and they get hooked on it. And I think you can see the results here. These guys have been great. It's awesome to have you here tonight. And we're looking forward to the coming years as we're going to continue to have a great relationship with the school system. Any questions for me or comments? Or I know we have a lot of people in the room, so I'm trying to mark my words shortly here and then not go too far, too deep into it.
Is the internship program just for seniors or?
It is for seniors, and that's through the internship program that the high school already has. So they already have a system that's been in place for years. And typically, what's going to happen in an internship is the student would accompany somebody at a normal line of business. For instance, if they were going to the police department, they would ride around in the police cruiser. If they were going to go to a restaurant, the intern would spend time in the kitchen or working with customers. I don't know if anybody knows this, but Carver is not like Brooklyn or the Bronx, and we don't have big fires every day. So if, for the most part, if they came to just shadow me at my work every day, typically what I do is I review plans, I do inspections, I do code enforcement, they'd be sleeping right now. They would not have a lot of fun doing that. So in lieu of having a lot of excitement just overflowing out of the fire department every day, what we decided to do to make it a little bit more poignant to what the fire service is like is put them through a recruit program. So that they would spend, I think it's four months now, going through what a firefighter would do in the first four months of their career. Learning the basics of ladders, fire hoses, fire pumps, search and rescue, putting the gear on quickly, go. All right, these guys are very competitive to get everybody geared up and do their jobs as quickly as possible. So that's one of the different aspects of this internship is they're not doing stuff that we would normally do every day at Carver Fire, but the potential to do.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm just very, I'm very thankful that you're here. I'm very thankful that our students had this opportunity. So thank you for taking the time. Thank you to the seniors for coming tonight. I know you guys, like Deputy Boyle said, have had a lot of celebrations over the last few weeks. Graduated, congratulations. But thank you so much for being here and for, you know, sharing this experience with us. So, thank you.
All right. Well, we will show the video. Just as a reminder to those at home on Zoom, you know, some of the technical difficulties we have is that we've always struggled to have sound on videos at home on Zoom. So if you're at home on Zoom, you might see the video but not hear it. Just want to put that up up front.
And the audio is just some stock music clips anyway, so it's not a tremendous part of the video. And maybe my voice here and there.
You should have the sound on TV, too.
Allow me to narrate some of this so everybody understands better what's going on. As the class progressed week after week, the intensity of each of the revolutions would increase, and we would push them further and further through their abilities and what they're capable of every week. So what you saw there was just some montages of them putting their gear on, which there's a one-minute standard for that. And I think when we started, we were well over two minutes. And by the end of the class, they were all consistently around 40 seconds to put their gear on.
Wow.
That's great.
A lot of fun. It's a lot of laughs. It's a lot of swearing sometimes at their instructor.
Did they successfully revive that bear?
That bear was saved. Yeah, that cat-bear thing. As you can see, they got to climb ladders, which is usually outside of everybody's comfort zone, while wearing air apparatus, breathing apparatus, searching in zero-visibility conditions. They have usually, if the conditions aren't totally blacked out, we'll have blindfolds over them so they can't see what they're doing. Just like that. So as soon as they would start to really become proficient at some of the basic skills of putting their gear on or assembling their air packs, then we would do something to complicate things by adding some extra noise or distractions. Oh, they took the trash out, too. And, or blindfolding them. That's firehouse duties 101 right there. Wash the trucks, take the trash out, sweep the floors, and then go rescue somebody. Sorry, Mazzilli, you still bruised from that? Guys, we don't drag him out feet-first. All right? The other way. Spin him around next time. When we started the program, I believe it was late January, early February. So obviously, the weather is not the most cooperative for doing this type of activity. They quickly discovered that you're never really cold, you're always hot. And that certainly got more and more difficult as time went on. This is us practicing and training for motor vehicle crashes. Oh, yeah, washing trucks again. Here we go. So we also did some training on this. If a motor vehicle crash was severe enough that somebody was trapped inside, this is one of the fire department's significant roles that we have in town of removing people from a crash. And frankly, I mean, what's more fun than watching an 18-year-old boy smash stuff with power tools?
Right?
They really enjoyed it. I'll also add that if anybody wanted to see this video in full quality, in full audio, it's available on the Carver Fire Department Facebook page. You'll have to go back a few weeks when it was originally posted. I suppose I can pin it to the top of the page tonight if anybody wants to see it.
You're doing a great job, Barry.
Play-by-play is great.
No power tools are harmed in the making of this video. That came the next week.
Now, at the end of the internship, do they have the qualification to join, or is there still additional training that would be needed?
Though, they would still need, yeah, quite a bit of training. So one of the aspects about the internship, which I really like, is we don't need to cover 1,000 topics. We can just cover the basics and then repeat them over and over and over again. Whereas typically during basic recruit training, you've got to cover everything in the span of time, and then you continue to learn while you're on the job. We do certainly hope for and encourage for these young men to try to join our fire department or any fire department. How many here have changed their majors to anything in fire or public safety related as a result of? Awesome. Good. Mr. Aronimo raised his hand.
Oh, yay. That's awesome.
Let the record show. And we've seen that the last few years, that, you know, that's not our goal, absolutely, but it's great to be able to have that influence on these young people when they come in and come out of this program having changed their direction a little bit, which is great.
That's just fantastic.
And we actually, we don't just take anybody into the intern program. They do have to come in and do an interview with the fire department prior to being accepted into the program. We were just laughing about that. They're required to schedule the interview themselves. They can't have mommy do it. They can't have their friend do it. They have to schedule it. Come in, show up on time with a resume, properly dressed. And I will say that the guidance department in the high school has been doing a great job because they've all come in very well-prepared, very well-dressed, ready to go for the interview, which is, which is good to see in young people. We don't always see that with adults that come into the fire department for interviews. And again, as the program went on, it got more and more difficult. You know, whenever they started to feel comfortable, I'd put a stop to that right away and make them do something a little bit more challenging.
Yeah, I see some head nods over there. You can attest to that.
Those hoses are no joke.
As physical as firefighting is, and I think everybody can understand and appreciate that the job is extremely physical, it's certainly, there's a lot of mental that goes into it, too. It requires a lot of mental toughness because your mind and your body's telling you that you can't do something when your instructor's telling you to do it and do it now. The fire ground is the same way. When we're tasked to rescue people, nobody else is coming but us. It's our job. So there is no alternative. It's us, and it has to be done. And not everybody gets to experience that in life, especially in high school. As critical as it is, you know, if you fail, you fail. But in the fire service, if you fail, unfortunately, somebody may lose their life. So it's critical for us to be able to perform our job in all sorts of duress situations and stressful situations.
I have to say, I think we're very blessed for our first responders in this town. And so thank you for all that Carver Fire does.
You're welcome. And I'm thankful for it also.
And our EMTs and, yeah, we're very blessed.
Get a great crew. Happy to be a part of it all. So some of this video also showcases our live-fire training facility that we have here in Carver. It's something that most fire departments don't have, but it's really the cornerstone of our fire department is our training operation. And we're able to do this intern program as a result of that. So their final training did culminate in a live-fire exercise, which was pretty awesome, right, boys? All right, who wants to come up and speak? Aducci? Happy birthday, by the way. All right, I know you have a busy night. Thank you once again for having us.
No pressure.
Thank you, Boyle. Thank you, Aducci. And thank you again to Carver Fire for all their work with our interns. Thank you to our students for being outstanding representatives of Carver Middle High School. So congratulations to each of our fire interns.
Absolutely. Thank you again.
Thank you, guys.
Great job.
All right, we have a second recognition this evening. So I'd like to invite up Lizzie Kelly and Ms. Young, who's going to come up and talk about Lizzie's project. So Elizabeth Kelly won second place in the Project Lead the Way statewide computer science industry connections project.
Thank you.
So her and Ms. Young are going to talk a little bit about the project and the award. And obviously, Lizzie just wants to say congratulations to you for doing such a great job and representing Carver so well.
Thank you. So in the spirit of community partnerships, I think we saw an amazing presentation from the fire department. This is a different kind of partnership with another industry. So I was fortunate enough to participate, we were fortunate enough to participate in a competition through Project Lead the Way. And it's called, it was called the Industry Connect participation. And what it was, was students in our computer science class and computer science centers across the Commonwealth competed in this competition where we all completed one project. And we packaged it, we sold it, we submitted, submitted it to Project Lead the Way, and then they pass it on to the industry professionals. And we thought that they were just going to give some authentic feedback, possibly come visit our class. And what I didn't realize at the time, it was actually a statewide competition. So we were very excited to get the results of that one. So I'll tell you a little bit about our silly task. Mr. Neath, you have the PDF. We're going to start on slide five. And so what you're seeing is the results.
Maybe not.
It's okay. I can describe it.
Hold on a second. It should be over there.
It opened in another tab, I think, Scott.
So I'll tell you a little bit about our assignment. It was a little silly at first, but it did involve some complex level of coding. Here we go. So what you're seeing is Lizzie's final project. And we had to prepare our users for a zombie apocalypse. And what they had to do was submit information about their role in society, whether or not they were a hunter, a caregiver, or a gatherer, and their age. And the app used a series of conversions and conditional statements to inform the user of how much water they were going to need, how much meals they were going to need. Here we go. So what you're seeing right here is the basic interface that Lizzie designed, asking the user for their name and information. And then it went through the algorithm and gave the user some information about how they were going to survive. So when we got the feedback from the industry professionals, they commented on how she had an innovative way of linking together information and that she has an exciting future ahead of her in software development. And we were so impressed that she received second place in the state. So I would like to show you guys the banner that is going to proudly hang in our building.
Absolutely. Maybe we can get a photo of them with the banner. We don't have to be in it, but...
This is going to proudly hang in our foyer. We're hoping to celebrate Lizzie's accomplishments. And so I'm super proud of what she has done. But I also want to share a little bit about our latest project, if you wouldn't mind.
That one, I need a second to get up.
Okay. So we know this was a little silly.
I don't, I don't know. I mean, after 2020, I rule nothing out. I might, I might like to, you know, see how much food and water I need to have in my basement for a zombie apocalypse.
I've got some before you. We also want to present Lizzie with, ooh, Jesus, it fell apart, with the award from Project Lead the Way. So this is for you. It's a little more formal, and it just fell apart, so we'll just... So our latest project is more of a community service project. So in our class, we were discussing some of the needs of the building for next year. And with next year's schedule coming, our students sort of commented on how it might be a little confusing to understand the rotation. We have a series of, you know, the order of periods are going to be totally different than anything we've experienced before. So Lizzie created an app. Our whole class was involved in this process of creating an app that the user would input the date, and it would output the day of the week and what the series of rotating classes were going to look like. And so this was a pretty, so here we go. So this is a very crude version of the Python code. If you hit run in that little green button in the middle, yeah, we are skipping that. Uh-oh. Can you get skip?
I have to pick the images because I'm having an airplane.
Oh, you haven't? Okay. All right, here we go.
Let's make sure you're not a bot.
Sorry.
Oh, goodness. Got to love technology.
We just wanted to share something that was maybe a little more relevant and a little bit more impactful for the community. All right. So if we hit run, it's going to ask the user for a date. This is the software, not Lizzie's code. Can you see it? Can you hit the, in that light blue bar? Yep.
Just hit that?
Yep. Okay. I don't think this is going to go. But what it does is, once you enter the date, it will give you all the information about any date in 2023 and the rotation of the periods. And if it's not a school day, Lizzie's going to tell you, the app would have told you that, too. I just wanted to share how proud I am of Lizzie. You know, I've had her since the very beginning, and she has very quickly just risen to the top. She is going to have a bright future in computer programming, and I'm just lucky to be part of your story, Lizzie. So congratulations.
Lizzie, congratulations. I want to do a picture with the banner.
Sure. Where should we set to stand?
Have the committee join. Right now, have every join.
Okay.
Right up front.
Right up front. Yeah, where you guys come around front, and the committee can join up front.
Want to go on?
Is that where you want to go?
Absolutely. It's amazing. Congratulations. All right, are we ready? Look here, I'm going to take a couple. Sorry, buddy. Stay right there, Robert.
Hey, that's okay.
All right. So that was some outstanding recognitions this evening. Congratulations to Lizzie. Congratulations to our fire department interns, for all of our students doing such a great job representing the Carver community. I'd like to make a suggestion in the changing of the agenda for the evening.
Yes.
So I'll make a suggestion. My suggestion would be to have the next item be the student ambassadors. And then after that, that we would do comments from the EAPC. And while we do comments from the EAPC, I would recommend that we move up item A from recommendations from the superintendent, which is a possible vote on the memorandum of agreement with the EAPC teachers and the ESP unit. So I've put that to the committee if everybody's okay with making those changes in the agenda for this evening.
Absolutely.
Yes. Everyone in agreement? Yes, that would be great.
Okay. So then we would like to invite up our student ambassadors, who are here with us this evening, Serena Greenwood and Madison Daly.
Welcome. Welcome, guys.
Good eve-
Give me a second. Let me get your presentation up. Sorry, guys. Oh, am I not sharing my screen? Try that again. Got to get back into the mojo of doing the Zoom in the room.
We haven't been here for two months.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been a while.
We've been a while.
There we go. It should be up. There we go.
Good evening. I am Serena Greenwood, and this is Madison Daly. We are student ambassadors. This month, Jerry Palata visited to share his experiences at the beach. He loves Cape Cod. Also, he also shared how he thinks about his ideas for his books. I didn't know there were so many different types of clams and fish. He seems to know about the whole ocean. It turns out that he is related to students that attend CES.
All the students in Carver Public Schools made sign to congratulate the seniors. To make you laugh, some of the seniors stated when they walked past Mr. Baldo, "I can't believe he's still here."
K-students, K-students got to experience life happening before their eyes. Baby chicks peeked their heads out to say hello to kindergarten. Our students watched them grow. Some students were able to hold them.
Grade four traveled to Sandwich to visit the Heritage Museum. Students got to explore the beautiful grounds. They viewed antique cars, played in the treehouse, and walked the flower-filled nature paths.
World's End for fifth grade. We dipped our toes in the water and touched seashells. We were, there was lots of hiking and birdwatching. We even had a scavenger hunt. At lunch, we could see the Boston skyline. It was a fun day.
The Evening of the Arts. Our third graders had to record a concert at the same time as the Evening of the Arts. The Evening of the Arts had every student's artwork for this past school year.
SCL District-wide Family Fun Night. A dinner from Mama Mia's was served in the cafeteria. And then parents and Carver citizens got to watch our very own Jungle Book perform The Bear Necessities. We also had kids from our new ukulele club play Best Day of My Life, which was a big hit. After the performance, some people stayed and played bingo and won cool prizes.
Chorus Field Trip to Carver Council on Aging. The elementary chorus went to Carver Council on Aging, brought a small drum, ukuleles, and all the fifth grade to perform in front of the senior citizens. Most kids made cards and showed people how to play the ukulele. It was an amazing experience.
Try it Tuesday. Try it Tuesdays where we have two fruits and vegetables every other Tuesday. Also, kids could color in their fruit or vegetable of their choice. Students would pick one or the other, and kids who brought lunch from home could, too. During our lunchtime, during our lunchtime, sometimes we would vote on which fruit or vegetable was better.
Thank you for having us, ambassadors, and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you so much for joining us, ladies.
You did a great job.
All right, we're ready to move on to our next agenda item, which I was going to skip to item A, a possible vote on the memorandum of agreement between the EAPC's teachers and the ESP units.
That would be great.
And comments from the EAPC at the same time?
Ah, yeah. If Tom and Tammy want to come up.
If you'd like to say anything.
But maybe it makes sense after the vote, or?
Yeah, either way. So I can just say, you know, summer's almost here. Great news. We're done negotiating. We ratified on our side, so we look forward to kind of, we ratified on your side. We are going to turn it over virtually to Stacy Waitner. Tammy, would you like to make a comment first?
Yep.
So, yeah, so.
He's here for support.
Okay.
So, yeah. Stacy's virtually, right?
You didn't, I had to bring her into the meeting.
Okay, sorry about that.
So is Stacy going to be, I can bring her into me. It's fine.
She's not, no.
She says she caught me in regards to the contract.
I was thinking after.
So why don't we do that after we do the contract?
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Can I just comment real quick on the meeting?
Sure, absolutely.
So we met this afternoon. We had an amazing turnout for both ratifications, and they both were ratified at 100%. So really proud of our team, both Tom and I, of all their hard work and all of the work that you've all done, too. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
And just to double up on that, I think everybody put a lot of time in the past two years over negotiations and worked a lot together. So it's glad to see, you know, come together.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you.
So I will give you an overview of both contracts, and why don't we just take them one at a time? So don't start me with the teachers first, then do the ESP unit. So just as an overview, the negotiation subcommittee for the teachers tentatively has agreed to a three-year contract with the teachers, FY '23 through FY '25. And the percentage raise increase each year is 3% in FY '23, 3% in FY '24, 3% in FY '25. And then there's also a $1,000 one-time payment being made at the end of FY '22. The only other piece of language that I want to point out in the teacher's contract is we did update the maternity leave language to match the current language of mass laws around parental leave, where it extends parental leave beyond just to females, or I shouldn't say females, to the person having the baby. So it extends, so it opens up leave for the other parent who is not the person having the baby, or in cases of adoptions, both parents, those types of things. So we have updated the language of the contract to match mass general law on those issues. So we have updated the language of the contract to match mass general law on those issues. So with that, I would make, I propose that we ratify the MOA between the teachers' negotiation subcommittee and the EAPC.
So I'll make a motion, I move that we ratify the memorandum of agreement reached between the teachers' negotiation subcommittee and the Educational Association of the Plymouth and Carver Teacher Unit.
I second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? I will quickly just say, I want to say thank you to everyone on our negotiating teams as well, for Ron and Scott, and for our town administrator, Mr. Fennessy, and our finance director, Sue Okwen. I know that everyone spent a lot of time going over the budget and things and trying to be creative to help us, you know, move forward in a beneficial way. So I just want to say thank you to everyone. And with that, we don't need to do a roll call vote, correct?
We do not do a roll call vote.
Excellent, so with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So it passes unanimously, so thank you.
And then moving on to the ESP unit of the EAPC. So the ESP negotiations subcommittee has been negotiating obviously with ESPs, and we've reached a tentative agreement. In that tentative agreement, it calls for again a three-year contract. And I'll give the raise in each year of the contract, a $2.50 raise in FY '23, a $2.50 raise in FY '24, a $2.50 raise in FY '25, and a $750 one-time payment to be paid in FY '22. And so at this time, again, my recommendation would be to, for the committee to ratify this agreement.
I move that we ratify the memorandum of agreement reached between the ESP's negotiation subcommittee and the Educational Association of Plymouth and the Carver ESP unit.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Again, I will just say thank you to everyone that I thanked before, so I'm very grateful to all of you and your hard work. And with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Stephanie, we do have two copies of each contract, if you and Tom would like to sign the MOAs, that would be great.
Thank you guys so much.
All right, so I have brought Stacy in as a co-host, and she should be able to talk to us now as a, from home.
So Stacy, I just wanted to like start it off a little bit, because we are very excited also tonight to be presenting our Diversity, Inclusion, and Equity Committee presentation, and there's a lot of colleagues that have been part of this, and through the EAPC, Stacy wanted to say a few words, so it's all yours, Stace.
Thanks Tammy. Yeah, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee is something that really branched off this year, and it's been something as a staff member that's been really exciting to see some of the initiatives unfold in the school. It's something that Carver has been teaching for years, diversity, equity, inclusion, making sure we have a strong community in our school system. But having the committee to highlight best practices and just encourage us to keep it on the forefront of our minds as we teach all of the students who come in through the school, has been a really big part, and I think helped a lot of us grow as faculty members. I know that as a science teacher, I have the privilege of getting to teach students about diversity every single year. We talk about how diversity in a species genetics can help make them stronger, how isolating the unique factors in who we are is something that allows us to learn more about us as species and as individuals. And in an ecosystem, when we get into environmental science, it's the diversity that makes a community resilient. Every different species fills its own niche, its own role. And as they do that, they make each other stronger, they help hold each other up when times get tough. And that's what the Carver community does, we've seen it over the past few years, and we've seen how our students are accepting some of their new roles in their school, and that's our goal, is to be able to use this education on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and just support the curriculum that we teach already, and help our students find their roles in our community, and to help impact our school in a positive way. So we're really excited to have this initiative moving forward, and for some of the professional development that it's brought us.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So we are going to be moving into comments from the general public, so I'll just say at this time, if you're on Zoom and you're interested in participating in public comment, if you just put your name into the chat, that'd be great.
Yes, so I just want to let everyone know, in case we have people speak, I will be using a timer on my phone to keep track of everyone's speaking time, because we allow three minutes per person that would like to speak. So if there's anyone in the room that would like to speak, you're more than welcome to come up to the table, and to announce yourself, and to feel free to make a comment.
Good evening, you all know me, I'm Deborah Giswaldo, I live at 204 Main Street in Carver. I am, for those of you who don't know me, a person who spent the majority of my career teaching Carver's wonderful students. So my heart is here, I am here respectfully, and I am here to share some thoughts that I have. Primarily, I'm here to lend my voice and support to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, and to ensure that you are hearing and listening to all of the voices in our community, not just those with whom you are like-minded. This is a diverse community, everyone needs to be heard. First, as someone who knows firsthand as an educator, any school will have from time to time at least an issue with discrimination or racism. It's a fact, it's not a pleasant fact, but it is a fact. I'm here to tell you that these things happen, even here in Carver. I learned a parable when I was a little girl. It's a parable that appears in two books of the Bible, Luke and Matthew. It's Luke 15. So you've all heard this story either in storybooks, or Sunday School, or at your grandmother's knee. But there was a shepherd who had 100 sheep. One of the sheep went missing and was in trouble, he could hear the bleeding of the sheep. So what did the shepherd do? He left the 99. And he went to save the one. The 99 were complaining, "How could you leave us? That was just one sheep." Well, the shepherd said, "That was the sheep that was in trouble." So I want you to think about that for a little while, regardless of your religious beliefs, it is a parable, a story, a story meant to teach. I want to say this, I received a lot of calls, emails, screenshots, all kinds of things about a survey that was administered in our school system. I want to say this, if a survey ferrets out one issue, or one child that needs to support, then that survey was worth it. Now, all of the people who were involved in this survey, I have worked intimately with them, I know them, I know what they're made of. And in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts regulations, it is codified that teachers must analyze, reflect, and alter their practice. I guarantee you that that's what these people will do, I would put my reputation on the line for it. This was the first run at the survey, anything rolled out the first time is not perfect. Let these people do their important work. Stand behind them and give them what they need. We need to stand up to this nonsense that goes on in this community.
That is, that is three minutes.
If that's three minutes, well then I'll come back next week.
My apologies.
That's the way it goes, I made myself clear on that three.
Thank you.
I don't see where anyone has put their name in the chat, but is there anyone else that's in the room with us that would like to speak? Okay, come right on up. Hi. It is getting warm in here, so yeah, it's a little loud, but.
Just talk really close to the mic, that way we can.
Yes.
I'm Jay Bonnie, and I'm a sophomore at Carver Middle High School. I'm a part of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, and I wanted to say a few words from a student that is directly affected by diversity education. Our school has always taught diversity, yet it can always get better, and knowing that there is a huge group of parents, teachers, and faculty that are willing to spend their time listening to students of many different minorities and differences, just makes a huge change. Even just knowing that I'm supported puts me at so much ease. And going through the education system, especially in elementary and middle school, was extremely hard. So coming back from COVID and knowing that I am supported more than ever, it makes me want to keep going, it really does, that's all.
Thank you, Jada.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Jay. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak? Again, I do not see anyone that has put their name in the chat, so if there's anyone else here that would like to speak, you're more than welcome to. Otherwise, we're going to close public comment and move on. So, okay, so saying no motion to the mic, we will close public comments, and we will move on to the approval of minutes from the open session minutes from May 9th, 2022.
I'll make a motion that we approve the open session minutes from May 9th, 2022.
I second. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. That brings us to communications.
Okay, we do have two communications this month. First, we'd like to announce that the district was notified at the end of May that our GSA group at the middle high school has received a grant for $10,000 from the It Gets Better Project to support renovating various spaces in the school to make it more welcoming for all students. They'll be meeting with the administration prior to the close of school to review their proposals, where they'd like to see the funds be spent. As a couple of specific examples, they're proposing to paint and remodel the gender-neutral, single-stall bathrooms in the building. They're also proposing to fill the hallways with positive messaging and cheerful art. So we just want to acknowledge that we received the grant, we're excited about it, it's a great opportunity to support making the building more welcoming for all students.
Absolutely.
The second communication is, you know, we did a lot of recognitions today, maybe this could have been another recognition, but it can't, we love to spend hours doing recognitions. But I did want to communicate to the community and to the committee that on June 3rd, the Carver Grade 6 and 7 Chorus competed in the Music in the Parks Festival in Holyoke and Agawam. This annual festival includes middle and high school groups from across Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Connecticut, and New York. Each group performs two selections and is given a rating of fair, good, excellent, or superior by the judges. The Carver Grade 6 and 7 Chorus was rated superior. They came in first place in their category, middle school mixed chorus, and they're also the highest-scoring middle school in any category that day, which means they were actually awarded the trophy for best overall middle school chorus. We're all extremely proud of them, I know that Jen Pratt was in attendance with them, so I don't know if she wants to address this at all. Obviously, anybody else can as well, but I know Jen was there to see it happen, so just want to say congratulations, communicate that information to the committee.
Yes, I was honored to be a chaperone on that trip, and they performed in a church, and I don't know what kind of church, but they were saying that the pillars were over 200 years old and they were solid pieces that have been carved, like it was the most beautiful church it had ever been in. The reason why they performed there is because the way the sound travels in this building is just amazing. And I videoed them, but at one point I closed my eyes and I was just listening to them, and I wouldn't have thought that they were sixth and seventh graders singing. Like, our kids sounded absolutely amazing. And so I'm very, very proud of them. I do want to give a shout out as well to the high school chorus, they had competed the week prior, and they came in second place, so I don't want them to feel slighted, but, you know, it was just really magnificent to get, you know, first place in our category, which is based on, you know, the size, but then overall first place, we were not expecting that. And, you know, these sixth and seventh graders are young, and they were nervous, and this was just great affirmation of the hard work that's being done in our schools, building their confidence, that comes from every teacher that they come across, you know, that they're able to get up and do these kind of things and have these kind of accomplishments. So I'm just very thankful for all of the staff, especially Ms. Griffin, who is an excellent chorus teacher.
So the only other thing I'd add to this is, you know, obviously, we spent kind of our first hour of the meeting kind of doing recognitions and celebrations, and I often say that, you know, great things happen in the school every day, and we're just able to highlight one or two of those great things today, and I'm glad we were able to do that.
Absolutely.
So thank you to all of our staff, all of our students, to the community for supporting us and being able to do all the great things that are happening.
Absolutely, I agree, it's great to have so many wonderful things to celebrate and see the kids enjoying being back in their elements, yes. So here, here, so that brings us to reports from the superintendent.
Okay, first we have some personnel updates since our last meeting. We've had a few new hires, Roseanne Cavalo as a food service manager at the elementary school is going to replace Doty Costo, who's retiring. Mary Beth Banks, a French teacher at the middle high school. Megan Aronimo as an RBT at Carver Elementary School, and Rebecca Hewitt as a reading specialist at Carver Elementary School. We do have a couple of transfers that are also going to be occurring, and actually, there might be a few more coming at our next meeting. Lindsay Swan is a reading specialist from Grade 4, special ed teacher at the elementary school. Jill Liddy to the position of adjustment counselor, English teacher in our CAP program from Adjustment Counselor, B C B A. We've also had two resignations since we last met, both bus drivers, so Janet Buffington announced her retirement, effective 6/3/2022, who served the district for a long time as a bus driver, and Rick Lemon as a CDL bus driver, and that's our update on personnel.
Okay, thank you very much. That brings us to what I'm hoping is a very brief COVID-19 update.
I will make the COVID-19 update brief. So interestingly enough, when, you know, we always compare the case numbers, and if we look, the numbers are actually very similar to the last time we met. You know, the case count for the last 14 days was 26 cases within the community of Carver, reported to DPH. Before it was, last time we met, a month ago, was 25. The average daily incident rate in the last 14 days was 15.2 cases per 100,000, last time we met it was 14.6. The positivity rate for the last 14 days was 5.42%, compared to 5.43% last time we met. So you'd say, well, we're in the same place, but the past month, we were definitely not in the same place.
No.
And I think we said this at the last meeting, at the last meeting we said, they were predicting a rise, and we definitely saw that rise. We had a lot of cases, actually, in mid-May, we had as many cases as we had in January, in terms of affecting both staff and students. And it strained us a little bit, and I just want to acknowledge to the community that that strain is a strain for everybody. You know, so when we're, so I'm going to scroll down here on the numbers, I think, nope. I'm going to get my taskbar to come up. There it is. So if we look at mid-May, on May 16th, we had 61 positive students and 15 positive staff members in the district. And when you're missing 15 staff members, it's hard in terms of coverage, and it's. And it's, by the way, is it is a loss of education for students because they're having a lot of subs. They're having a lot of other teachers, I should say, they're having a lot of other teachers cover. I don't know if we're having a lot of subs. So having the teacher staff step up and cover each other's classes. And then just the students being out, you know, that's a snapshot. That's one day. Remember, those 61 students had to be out for at least five days, you know? And then there are students on each side of that day. So the number of students during the month of May who've been impacted by being out of school is really large. But now we're seeing the trend come back down. And if we look at today's dashboard numbers, we have three positive students, one positive staff member. So it really was, it was a little bit of a short, the trend. All happened since last time we met, since last time we met. We went up the hill and we've come back down the hill. And just hopefully, this will be the last hill that we will go up and down. I will say that the state has announced that all testing programs being offered through the state. So right now, we're doing the distribution of COVID-19 home tests on a biweekly basis. The last distribution was actually last Friday, that those programs will be coming to an end at the end of the school year. And they are not going to be funding them next year. So they've come out with that official announcement. There'll be no funding of testing programs through the state. Our intention as a school district is to maintain symptomatic testing in our nurse's office. We actually have received a number of tests that we'll be able to start next year off. And the last set of tests we just sent home, actually, we put a sticker on all the tests because they've extended the expiration dates. Some to October, some to December. So we feel confident they're actually going to have enough tests on hand to continue symptomatic testing through the nurse's office through December. Then we'll have to make some decisions whether we want to continue to purchase some tests and continue it through the year. But that would all fall back on the, you know, the local district, on the community of Carver, because the state is no longer funding any of those programs. And the last piece of that is, they have not given any update on protocols. So right now, they're saying that their sense is the protocols will stay the same in the fall. In terms of if you're positive for COVID, you have to miss five days. If you're feeling better, you can return on Day 6 wearing a mask. But they said they'll give us an update in August. So they said in August, there'll be some sort of updated guidance. You know, just the reality of what just happened in the past month shows you that things can change quickly. So they're really just saying, we're holding the course right now. There'll be some sort of a statement in August in terms of what the protocols would be. But their general sense is the protocols will stay the same. You know, there's some question whether the protocols would be removed totally. You know, it would just be if you're feeling better, come back to work. But I'm not saying that's what the protocol is. Right now, they're saying the protocols are going to stay where they are for the fall.
Great.
So unless you have questions, that's my COVID-19 update for today.
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to DEI Committee Overview. I'd like to invite Tanya Dawson and Tammy Johnson to join me in the presentation.
Welcome. Thank you both for being here.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
And I will say that several members of the DEI Committee who are here in the audience this evening who've come to support their colleagues in the slideshow.
So I get, starting off, the first slide is the committee. And you can see that I'm not going to read every name because if I do, we'll be here for quite a long time. But it's just, it shows you the array of administration, ESPs, teachers, parents, students, community representatives. We have people from all different, we call them stakeholders in our community. And then it's why this Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. I've done a lot of work in the last, say, six years or so with colleagues, not just in Carver, but outside of Carver in Massachusetts and being part of the Massachusetts Teachers Association. And there's been a lot of discussions of what we can do in our schools. And it came to my attention a few years ago that there are actually schools in the state of, in Massachusetts that have, like, DEI committees and programs and things like that. So that was part of the reason for getting this started. But also, I have a daughter who graduated from Carver Middle High School in 2008. She is a biracial, one of our biracial students, and it has brought up a lot of memories. And there's things that were part of her experience that even as her parent, I didn't realize. One, for example, her grandmother, who's a black woman who graduated from Bryn Mawr to be a pediatrician. She was, when I was just talking to my daughter just a few weeks ago, was referred to as the one that taught me how to be a black woman in our society. So that's something that she's never said to me, you know, this is something recent. So, but it does reflect on her experiences and the fact that she needs somebody that is, that's going to help her figure out and navigate the society. And so with that coupled with other colleagues within Carver that wanted this, this became my professional development goal. And the idea is to develop a committee to bring together stakeholders, assess where we are, implement action plan, and then repeat. And my professional goal is right there. And some of the benefits of this. Next slide.
So the, so the only thing I would add on that is obviously, you came to me. And as the superintendent of schools, I worked with you in terms of forming the committee and that the goal of the committee is to, you know, do the things that you're talking about and to help inform the teachers and the administration to see what we can do better, to see how we can do a better job to make the school more inclusive for all students.
Right. Just one thing I wanted to set up, because it's, through research, these are the things that have shown that has improved school systems or workplaces when they work on diversity, inclusion, and equity. Students are able to learn more about different cultures and backgrounds, allowing them to feel a greater sense of comfort with these differences that in turn makes them more comfortable with themselves, leading to a deeper, a deeper sense of safety. So with that, Scott, go ahead.
So we also want to say that this is aligned with our educational blueprint. So if we look at the vision statement, the core values, and our first key objective of support safe schools. And so obviously, the vision statement talks about a comprehensive curriculum that inspires students to learn and think creatively in a safe, supportive, and inclusive environment. The core value says everyone should be treated with dignity and respect. And our school objective is support safe schools, to sustain a safe and supportive, inclusive learning environment to ensure that we're addressing the physical, social, emotional, and behavioral needs of all of our students and to maximize students' capacity to achieve. And then ultimately, that concept of supporting safe schools, that really is the work of the DEI Committee to say, what can we do as a district to ensure that we are addressing physical, social, emotional, behavioral needs and promoting inclusivity within the school district?
So then we started off our committee thinking about the vision. All the people that came into the committee had all different experiences and different reasons for being part of the committee. And we really thought it was important to make sure that we had a common, general goal and that encompassed everybody as much as we can. So I really find this very powerful. It took us a long time to come up with this. The Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee includes all stakeholders of the Carver Public Schools to design and implement strategies that value diversity and ensure equity. The committee will do this through courageous conversations and actions which support a culturally inclusive community in a changing global society.
And then after we developed our vision, we developed our goals for our committee for this year, which was to implement baseline data assessments to determine our status in relation to our vision. Foster a sense of belonging where all members of the school community feel included. Establish recruitment and retention practices that increase the diversity of the staff. So we have created and completed a survey for staff and students. Our hope is to have a sense of belonging within our school communities. Scott has attended a meeting with DESI in recruiting and retaining minority candidates. And the next slide's mine as well. So just to piggyback on what Stacy had said earlier, we have been doing this work. We've been doing this work through our SEI endorsement classes. There's about six of us at the elementary school that are participating in an 18-month-long course called the Equity Impairment Project through DESI. At the beginning of the year, we had Mahdi Dabinga present to us and provide professional development. And then last year, we had Joel Rastuccio, also at the beginning of the year for professional development.
So we wanted to share some of the survey results with the committee and with the community. And we state that really our goal of doing the survey was just to take the temperature and get a sense of, you know, how our students felt about some of these issues around a safe and supportive school climate. So a small group of members of the DEI Committee looked at all the survey results, then we gleaned them out. We shared what I'm sharing here this evening with the committee as a whole. And we just want to talk about some of the themes and some of our takeaways from looking at the survey. So like I said, we're not going to go through every question, but we just highlighted some that we thought were informative for us as a committee and for the administration. We'll be sharing these results with teachers. I'll be sharing these results with the administrative team. So I'm accepted as a valued member of my school community. We thought it was a strong statement that 73% of students respond always or most of the time. The grade bar, which is a little larger, is a group that said, I don't know. And we'll see that a couple of times in terms of, that actually, in some questions, there was students saying, I don't know. But if you really think about students reflecting on these things, maybe they don't really truly have that sense if they're a valued member of the community, and that's something we have to think about. So one that's concerning to us, and I know it's something we've talked about before, was question number four. Bullying is taken seriously and action is taken immediately. 53% of students responded always or most of the time, but 12% of students said never. So obviously, that's a concern for us as we go forward into next year, looking at what we can do around bullying education for students, for faculty, for the community as a whole. And, you know, we have, and so we have some thoughts about that in terms of even defining bullying again for the community. Because I do think that people at times, that anything that's a conflict, they say is bullying. And there is a distinct definition of what bullying is. But I don't say that to diminish the concern here. So obviously, we look at this number and say, that's a concern. It's concerning that 12% of the students responded, said never to that question. So we have to think about how we can approach that and what we can do to ensure students that we are going to address every incident of bullying that comes before the administration and the teachers and respond to those. Another response that was a little concerning, and I just did these in order. I didn't put the positive and then the concern, just actually, in the order of the questions. So question number six was, I feel comfortable talking to my teachers when someone is treating me unfairly. 52% of students responded always or most of the time, so obviously, we'd like to see that be a little higher. But again, concerning that only 14% said never. So that's something we're going to have to talk about with our teaching staff, that 14% of students responded that they don't feel comfortable talking to someone if they feel like they're being treated unfairly. So you have to think about the environment that we're creating within our school. Question number eight, my own perspective is valued in school, even if it's different. And we had 59% of students respond always or most of the time. And there also was a large chunk, 16% said, I don't know. But I, like, I don't necessarily think that's a bad thing. You know, so they're just saying, I really don't know. I don't know if people are valuing my perspective. I'm not saying they're not. I just don't know if they are. So, but we thought that was actually a fairly positive result. My teachers have high behavioral and act like expectations for all students. 62% of students responded always or most of the time, with a very small percentage responding as never. So that kind of light yellow is the never category, so that was a small percentage. We thought that was a positive result. The staff at my school treats all students with respect. 74% of students responded always or most of the time. We thought that was a positive result. Question number 15, my teachers helped me see more than one point of view. 74% of students responded almost or most of the time. And we thought that was a positive response, a strong response, saying that, you know, part of the responsibility of teaching is to present multiple points of view and have students consider them. And that, that's what education is about. So we thought that was a really positive, strong response. Number 16, I feel physically safe in school. 73% of students responded always or most of the time. And I can give you the exact breakdown on this one. 17% said some of the time, 4% said never, 6% said I don't know. The one that's concerning to us is actually the next question. And I actually, I have some thoughts about this, but they really are my own thoughts. And obviously, this is something we're going to have to think about and consider as the DEI Committee, as a school community, again, as teachers, as administrators. 55% of students responded always or most of the time to the question, I feel emotionally safe in school. Obviously, it's concerning that 14% of students said never. You know, so, and you think about that, so as I think about that, that connection between being emotionally safe versus physically safe. I do feel in general, students feel physically safe. I do, but I also think that the last three years have really been disconcerting for many people. And for a variety of reasons, whether it's COVID, whether it's their own, how COVID's impacted their own family, whether it's financial issues, reality, whether it's the gun issue in terms of school shootings, even though saying physically safe, I still, that impacts their emotional safety. So I think there's a why, we can make a long list of reasons of why students may feel emotionally unsafe in school. But obviously, this is a question we have to look at and say, okay, so what does that mean to us? What are we going to do with this? What are we going to think about? Because ultimately, our goal, if we go back to our educational blueprint, is to make sure every student feels physically, emotionally safe. And so that, this has to be a little bit of a flag for us to say, what steps are we going to take to ensure that students feel emotionally safe? Last question I'm going to highlight, the teachers and staff at my school care about me for who I am. And 72% responded always or most of the time, which we thought was a really strong or positive result. So the students had the option to take, open, two open response questions. Only about 20% of the students who completed the survey did the open response questions, so 80% left a blank. I do, I do think sometimes when you get a response to this type of open response question, it tends to be more of a concern than a positive in general, in terms of survey taking. You know, so like I said, 80% of the students didn't respond to this at all. But what can I, what can my school do to better promote equity and diversity? Again, I'm reading into this. One of the themes, several students talked about kindness. And, and we didn't even take students' grade levels. So like, we made no attempt to track student back, student data back to grades. Or this is what the third grader said, this is what the fourth grader said. So I'm on a limb here a little bit. But the elementary school has taken a huge theme on kindness. Everything they've done this year has been about kindness. And I actually think it was some of the elementary students who were saying, we want more of that. We want to stay with this kindness theme, that that would be a good thing for the school. There's general response around celebrating or learning more about culture and holidays. And then bullying needs to be consistently addressed. So that may not be the students' words, but as you read their written responses, they generally run around the concept of addressing bullying consistently. Same thing for the next question was, if you'd like, if you'd like, please provide more information about one or more of your answers above. So it's kind of an open-ended, kind of tell us what, how you feel about anything that you had answered above. Again, in that response, there was several response around the bullying needs to be consistently addressed. More organized activities to support students, to say, like, we need to start bringing some of that stuff back, which we've actually talked about doing in terms of bringing back more of the celebrations that we did as a school district and maybe thinking of new ones. Teachers slash school need to have appreciation for the challenges kids face. And there were a couple along that lines, and were actually pretty eloquently written, saying that maybe teachers and the administration, the school as a whole, has to do a better job reflecting on the challenges that we've all faced and that the impact that it has on us. So I think that's an interesting perspective and something that we have to think about. And then ultimately, a few students wrote, I say this is a theme, there were only a few students who responded this way. Really a handful, but I think it's, I wanted to acknowledge it, that all students feel welcomed by, not all students feel welcomed by students and staff. And that ultimately, as I think about it, is kind of our conclusion on the survey results, is that that's really what this committee is about. Is we want to recognize that maybe not all students feel emotionally safe in school. We want to recognize that maybe all students don't see, don't feel seen. We need to recognize that maybe not all students feel welcomed by staff. And if we walked down individually to people and said, are you welcoming? Yeah, I'm very welcoming. But we have to, we have to stop being reflective about that and hearing students' voices. So part of the point of the So, part of the point of the committee is to do that work, is to hear students' voices, hear the community's voices, and say, "What can we do to make this, this all better?" I did want to address, because there were some, as I think people are aware, there were some people within the community who had concerns about the survey. So, I wanted, I felt to be appropriate to express concerns that were brought to me about the survey and giving the survey. So, the survey concerns that have been brought to my attention is that the survey was given to students during the school day. People felt this should have been more of an optional survey that was sent home to families and said, "If you want to complete this, complete it. If not, then we shouldn't be taking school time to give the survey." Some concerns were that parents were given an opt-out option rather than an opt-in, similar to the one above in some ways, that parents should have been said, "Yes, I want my students to participate, whether in school or out of school," versus, "I don't want my student to participate." Maybe there should have been a different survey for students in grade three for five. And as the committee reflected on that, we kind of almost agreed. So, as the committee looked at the survey results, and some of our teachers, because we have members of the committee who are third, fourth, fifth grade teachers, they said, "Yeah, when it actually came time to do the survey, that, you know, maybe it could have been, maybe it could have been worded differently to be more supportive for those students, to get better responses." And then some people raised the question of the appropriateness of some questions. So, that is our, that's the overall things that we took away, that were shared, and this information was shared with the committee at our last meeting.
Okay, some of the takeaways from some of the committee members are, it's impacted our awareness and acknowledgement of our L families as we have become more inclusive in our communication, definitely perspective-taking, broader conversation within the school setting and the community. And I wrote my own takeaway, but as I'm sitting here and listening, I think courageous conversation is what I really took out of this committee work this school year.
And just to sum it all up, what's the next steps? So, another, the next things that we, with the colleagues asking for it, is to get a summer reading and where the goal is to do a book discussion next year around this topic. And so, we've got this, Equity Access in the Quest to Be Who Our Students Need Us to Be by Cornelius Minor. And we sent out the email on Friday for people to sign up. We already have 30 people, which is exciting. Next year, we plan on creating small subcommittees where we each work on some of the action plans that we have stated above and then reevaluate at the end of the year. And above all, we want to make sure that this is as transparent as possible and we communicate to our community, because we really believe the community is a big part of this, where we want to make our school community a safe, happy one for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming to present.
Appreciate it.
I also want to say thank you to all of the committee members that are here supporting in the audience. I appreciate all of your efforts. I was fortunate enough to attend the last meeting because Kelly was unable to. So, thank you for welcoming me and for letting me hear your very robust discussions. I appreciate your passion and your dedication to our students and to our school community. So, I look forward to your continued work in the future. So, thank you all very much.
May I say something, Steph?
Yeah, absolutely.
Awesome. I just want to thank you guys for coming, presenting to us. I wish we could have heard from you more, because I think this is really important work. Like, I supported, we actually voted, I think it was, I don't remember the vote, but we voted to create the committee at our October meeting. And I always say that a child is not going to be in a place to learn if they feel unsafe in any way, if they feel unaccepted, or if they feel shunned, or if they feel embarrassed, if they feel any feeling that is negative in nature, they're not going to be in a space to be educated, never mind educate well. And ultimately, the main purpose of school is to teach these kids, but we can't teach these kids if they're not in a teachable place. And so, we have to look at these other things, and too many people, I don't want to say that, some people don't see that as, well, you just need to teach English, math, and writing, and, you know, social studies, science, you know, the core subjects. But somebody's not in a teachable position if they're anxious, or they're depressed, or they're upset, or they're feeling targeted, like, so, I guess my point is that I appreciate that we're having these conversations, and I wish that we could do them more. I, it's not my place, but I would like to throw out maybe a quarterly update from the DEI, just so that this is a forum that we can use to share with the community what's happening in our schools, because it's important. Social and emotional impacts are huge. It's impacted my family, it's impacted my friends' families, and so, we just want everyone to feel supported. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, that brings us to Dr. Erickson, which I'm going to say every time I have the opportunity, who is going to present Grade 10 MCAS score overview.
Right.
As a framing, just at our last meeting, we talked about the change in the new competency determination standard. And the committee just asked for some information about, you know, based on recent scores, what would be the impact on our students if a change happened. So, I was going to talk about that a little bit.
Yes, so Mr. Neef just asked me, or Superintendent Neef, asked me to go ahead and just run some numbers about what sort of impact this would have if the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education chooses to vote the proposed language in later this month at their June 28th meeting. And just as a reminder, last month, or at our last meeting, Superintendent Neef talked about some of the impetus for why this proposal has been brought up by the commissioner. So, he cited the fact that back in January, the board heard about a data partnership between Brown Harvard University and Department of Elementary and Secondary Education regarding compelling evidence around the correlation between MCAS scores and later outcomes in education and the workforce. So, I had prepared for you just a little sheet, kind of a one-page reminder of the fact that in moving to, in moving to the next generation MCAS for grade 10, they went through the Equa, the Equa percentile linking study to try to figure out where the cut points would be. And according to their initial linking, the cut point for 10th grade for competency determination for English Language Arts would be 454, that would be the score, and for math, it would be 469. Their new proposed language says that in order to pass, that students would have to be at a 470 with a proficiency plan, or a 486 would be considered meeting the expectation. So, in math, that's a difference of one point. Looking at our 2021 data, which again was informed by COVID, and our 2019 data, basically, for 2021, it would make no difference to us. We had no students that fell within that one-point discrepancy. However, to get to the 486 points, it would have been 13 students. So, we had 13 students between the current 469 and the aspirational 486, so that's the delta there. And then, looking at 2019 data for mathematics, the difference would be 11 students. So, that would be the impact on us. In terms of English Language Arts, going from a 454 to a 470, which is a 16-point gain or a 16-point higher bar to set, it would be four students that would have been impacted in 2021, or it would have been nine students in, in 2019. And then, to get to the 486, it would have been 14 students to make that 32-point gain in English Language Arts.
Wow.
So, obviously, this change would have some impact on our students.
Did we receive any acknowledgement to the letter we sent?
We did not. I did not, no. So, the board will be taking that up soon, on June 28th. See if they make that change, and we'll give you an update and let you know what happens.
Hopefully, there'll be enough advocacy around it that perhaps they'll postpone, with all of that unfinished learning.
I hope so.
The timing is concerning.
Yeah, for sure.
Students and teachers are stressed enough. Anyway, thank you very much for that information, Dr. Erickson.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it. And that brings us to.
School Improvement Plan. I don't know who. Ruby, you want to go first? Ruby's raising her hand.
Good evening, everyone. How are you?
Good evening. How are you? Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so, I guess Mike isn't going to come and sit by me, huh? All right, so, thank you, Mr. Neef, for pulling that up. And I just wanted to start off by introducing a few folks who are on our school council. And I, and I actually feel really honored to be presenting the school council this evening, the school improvement plan this evening, because I've worked on the school improvement plan for about 10 years now. I remember Stephanie being on the school council several years ago. And this, this time around, the, the parents really have worked very, very closely with us. So, we've, we've really delved deep, rolled up our sleeves, and really kind of dissected a whole bunch of things in our, in our school improvement plan. So, I have a few members in the audience that I just wanted to introduce. So, I'm going to start with Anne Marie Blackton. She's one of our preschool teachers, so say hello, Anne Marie's back there. Joyce McCrina, grade three teacher. Sharon King is one of our parents, Sharon. Ryan Russett is one of our parents. He's also known as Big Ryan. So, he's a celebrity, and we're honored to be working with him. He couldn't be here tonight. Lindsay Silva is one of our parents as well. Shay Thompson is a community member that's been on our council for a couple of years, and Pat Tobin, who is back there. Then we have, hi, Pat, then we have a couple of other collaborators, heavy lifters, just folks that are always at our meetings, participating and helping. And it is Tanya Dawson, one of our associate principals, and Dr. Jessica Pinella.
Hi, girls.
And Pauline Lopez is one of our admin assistants who helps with the meeting minutes, the email reminders, the everything and anything. So, I want to go ahead and get started. I have shared the improvement plan with you all. The four strategic objectives you saw earlier tonight when Mr. Neef shared the blueprint, so I'm not going to say too, too much about those. But underneath our strategic objectives, we have four areas of focus. And so, we always want to tie everything that we're doing in our school into, into these areas of focus. And my intention tonight is not to go over every, every single goal that we're working on, but I wanted to highlight at least a couple that are maybe a little bit newer goals for us. So, under the first one, Safe and Supportive Schools, you all know we've been working really diligently on, on a social-emotional learning competencies for our students. And so, going into this next year, if you look at 1.3, we want to continue to strengthen our, our safety protocols. We utilize what we call the Handle with Care. It's a, it's a method of communication whenever children, or we're aware that children are experiencing some trauma for, for some reason or another. We work very closely with our police department. We work very closely with different organizations in the community that help with, with students, but sometimes, things just happen. You know, families have challenges, so things happen in, in homes. And children may come to school having experienced some trauma, and we want to make sure that we're communicating with our, our teachers so that they're aware. So, we have a system of an email or communication that's called Handle with Care, just to use an extra special kid gloves with our, with our students until we get more information. But ultimately, we want our kids to be in school. We'd rather that they be in school that when they're dealing with, with some kind of a traumatic situation. We want to focus, again, more intently on our, on our safety drills. We actually had a fire drill today at the school. The kids did a fabulous job. We exited our building in 2 minutes and 30 seconds flat, and that's awesome. But, yes, but we, we want to continue to practice our safety drills, whether it's bus safety, fire drills, or our intruder drills. You'll just be hearing more about that next year. And everything that I'm talking about tonight is really for next year, okay? So, then, we've added 1.4, which we're calling increasing our, our students' comfort level by improving our school climate. We recognize that at the elementary school, we, our work is ongoing with helping all of our children to feel comfortable, our staff as well. Everyone needs to feel comfortable, feel supportive, supported. And we're doing this work alongside our, our other committees. So, we have a committee that's called the Safe and Supportive Schools Committee. Those of you who have been on the school committee have heard about this for the last several years. We're going to apply for a grant again this next week before we leave for summer break. Well, we don't, don't leave for summer break, but we're, we're going to, we're going to apply for the grant. Because this committee is really working on, currently, we're working on helping to increase student voice at the elementary school. And one of the ways that we're going to do this is through increased opportunities for kids during the school day, like leader-like responsibilities for our kids. You might have seen some of this this past year, where we've had Ms. Demarche, or Ms. Krempe, or even Ms. Kent, all of the before and after-school programs. We want older students to step in, help these teachers with the younger kids, help them to facilitate groups, help them to get equipment ready, help them to talk to the kids, help them to be models, role models for the kids. But we're going to see more of that this next year with the elementary students just stepping up and, and supporting each other in the school. It's really just good for them, and it's good for the little ones to see also. We're going to continue to work with our DEI committee and our SEL committee and tie a lot of the goals that they're working on into the school improvement plan. The other thing we'll continue to do is our end-of-year move-up day, where students are, we're just helping our students to feel comfortable as they transition into the next grade. So, then, I'm going to go ahead and go into the next, the next initiative, and then at the end, I'll see if you have any questions. So, under community engagement, we're going to continue our developed, our, sorry, continue to develop our outreach and community partnerships. So, we work with local folks, whether it's our Early Childhood Council or local departments such as, there's the Plymouth PCO Hub. We've been talking about that organization for the last couple of years. They have lots of resources for us at the elementary school, whether it's mental health resources, whether it's helping families to access funds just to maybe help during the winter with utilities, that sort of thing. So, this organization has been a, really a blessing to us, because we can access them every Tuesday, and they can help us with accessing resources, and it's free. We're going to continue to work with the Trauma and Learning Policy Initiative, which is an organization that's been working with Carver Elementary School on helping us to be a trauma-sensitive school. And we're just very excited about all of the partnerships that, so these are just a few that I wanted to highlight tonight. We're going, going to focus on our home support and strengthening our parent and teacher relationships. And we're going to do that by making sure we have those ongoing volunteer trainings. That's one thing. We want to continue to create opportunities for parents and guardians to come to school, because when we administered our Family Engagement Survey in May, what we learned is, you know, parents are feeling like, you know, we haven't had a window into the school in two years. We really want to see what, what things are looking like and what's, what's happening. And we, we had pictures which are wonderful, but now we really want to be in there too. So, we definitely want to continue to, to do that at the elementary. This year, we were. This year, we were able to do that once we realized that we were kind of heading out of the pandemic. I mean, I know we're still in a pandemic, but for us, we need to move forward. And we recognize that, we want to. So we saw the opportunity. We said, let's start the volunteer trainings. Let's get our parents in. It's going to be good weather. Let's have, you know, opportunities for events that are outside. And at that point, we'll have lots of our parents trained. And then we'll continue with our trainings in the fall. So we're excited about that. And then we want to continue to administer the Family Engagement Survey. Now, I will say, I recognize that we had the Family Engagement Survey go out right around the same time that the DEI survey went out. So I recognize that there was a little bit of confusion for some folks. But our Family Engagement Survey came from the Safe and Supportive Schools Committee. And the Safe and Supportive Schools Committee is the committee that was awarded this grant that is tasked with identifying areas of concern in our school. And so family engagement is one of those things that is an area of concern. And it is because we've been in COVID for two years. And so we really want to improve there. So going to the next area, which is Elevate Teaching and Learning. Everything that I talk about in this area is really going to be focused on professional development for our teachers and ESPs. So again, I'm just going to highlight a couple. But we're going to provide ongoing training for teachers in Bridges' math curriculum, but we're really going to focus on the areas of number sense and fluency. We want to continue to strengthen our staff and our teaching, our faculty. Everyone continues strengthening our awareness of inclusivity. And we want to do that in multiple ways, not only about what children are going through, but how we teach them through universal design, through multiple means of educating students, whether it's, you know, we talk about visual representation of things. We talk about auditory representation. But always ensuring that we're finding multiple ways for students to engage with their learning, with the content. Then I'm going to skip over to 3.3. Again, what we're trying to do here is rebuild our best practices to address student gaps. And we're going to continue to provide professional development, really to increase teacher competencies and skills in line with what the students need. And then we're going to be working with our intervention team. You're going to, you might hear a little bit more about this evening or in the fall about how we continue to work on our intervention model, which really is designed to specifically address student gaps. So you know, we have an intervention model for reading and math. And you'll be hearing more about that. But every year, we really have to align that with what our data is showing us. But we absolutely know that our students do need and really benefit from intervention. And then, under Leverage Leadership and Leverage Leadership Policy and Funding, this area, what we've been working on over the last several years, really continuing to expand our preschool program to just make sure that we're fully maximizing the services that we offer so that we can provide the preschool to as many children as possible. This is going to complete Ms. Dawson's first year as our early childhood coordinator. So she's going to continue to work with the DESE on ensuring that we are meeting the DESE early childhood indicators. And she's going to continue to work on our NAEC standards. And do you have, does anyone on the committee want to share anything that I might have left? I really just want to thank them a lot because they've worked, you know, we've met on Zoom for almost a year and a half, right? And then we met in person. And then they're here tonight. Most of the members are here tonight to help to support this. So it really means a lot to me, and I hope it means a lot to you because they're very dedicated to all of our children.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ruby.
Right in the right time.
It is really nice to see faces.
Yes.
Without masks.
Yes, and thank you all for your dedication to school council and for working with administration to put this plan together and for showing your support and coming tonight. We love it when people come to our meetings, so you're welcome anytime. But thank you very much for all of your efforts. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
Does anyone have any questions? Great job, Ruby.
Thank you, Ruby.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, I will invite Mr. Schultz up to do the Middle High School Improvement Plan.
My committee has the utmost faith in me, and I'm the other one here.
Welcome, Mr. Schultz.
Thank you. I will start by just recognizing our school council, our staff members were Dylan Antel, Mary Willette, and Maria Calvo. Our parent reps were Adam Holmes and Tara Stone. And our student members were Jay Peters and Sydney Sheehan. I also want to recognize administration and department chairs, who, once we had a draft of this, they went through it and sort of vetted it with us to make sure it was in line with some of the things we're working on. So I will go fairly quickly through this. I'm happy to take questions after each priority area, or we can do it at the end. Starting with the Support Safe Schools. So we plan to continue our annual Alice trainings and drills, like Ruby had mentioned. You know, most of what we're doing in terms of Alice was somewhat delayed a little bit during the pandemic. So our ultimate goal is to do an annual enhanced lockdown drill and an evacuation. So we're getting back to that. We did an enhanced lockdown drill about a month ago. And one of the things that I think is important to mention here is that we have something called Bolo Sticks in our building. And they're kind of hard to explain. But they're attached at the base of the door, and there's a hole in the floor at the base of the door. And when there's an emergency of any type, there are pins by the door. They slide into the slot and into the ground, and it's grounded. So it's really almost impossible to get through that door. It's a wedge. We've had other districts come in. We had an EAS visit recently come in, and they were really impressed with the Bolo Stick. So it is a really safe mechanism that we've adopted. And most, if not all, of the rooms that are being occupied have them in our building. And it's pretty standard for our students to know where they are and what to do with them. I should have brought my glasses. Implement the new building schedule. So as you know, we've gone over the schedule. We're starting a new schedule next year, seven periods, with five meeting in the day, and we've implemented that power hour. So that's a big shift for us, and we're excited for the power hour. Like Ruby, we're going to continue our work with the DEI committee to promote diversity, equity, inclusion practices within our school community. I think it looks different in each building. One of the areas we worked on this year was some smaller subcommittees, where I'm working with some students around an opportunity for them to get together and meet and have conversations. So we're going to continue that work and do some work based on recommendations from the committee. Continue to provide opportunities or provide information for Aspen. One of the things that happened during the pandemic, unfortunately, is we adopted a new information system, which was difficult for us in terms of shifting from what we were comfortable with, with IPASS and Jupiter Grades to Aspen. So we are aware that there needs to be more training for both parents and students around some of the functionality of it. So that's a focus for us. Provide information, assemblies, and resources for students and families around some of the topics we've been discussing today, social media bullying and inclusion. So prior to the pandemic, we did host at least one or two assemblies each year around these topics. We had a partnership with Mark out of Bridgewater State College and Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center. And Dr. England had come out to speak with our students and parents a few times. So we know that there has been a lapse in that with the pandemic due to some restrictions. But bringing back presenters that can help support and educate students on social media, parents on social media. Bullying, which I know is a hot topic, I think that education around bullying is really important. I think that sometimes we look at conflict as bullying, and we just need more information and awareness and communication. So it is true that if we have information, we're obligated to act on it. And sometimes we don't get the information until it's posted someplace or something has happened. So encouraging students and parents to reach out would be part of that. This is new, create a student advisory council. So, you know, there's a variety of surveys that students participate in throughout the year. Could be the vocal survey through the MCAS testing, or it could be, you know, we participate in a survey with the University of Michigan. So a lot of these surveys ask similar questions, and one of them talks about student voice and choice. And I think that one thing that we've seen is that we could do more student voice. Getting them involved in our council and student handbook discussions is really important. Provide faculty PD opportunities for inclusion education. So this is something we've been talking about. There is a group of special ed teachers that participate in the CASL training this year. And one of our focuses for our PD next year is to provide resources in social-emotional learning, universal design for learning, and continue our work with project-based learning. So that would be all part of our Safe Support Safe Schools initiative. I can jump into Engage the Community. This is one where, you know, we've seen a decline in parent participation at events and, you know, with the lack of community events over the last couple of years with COVID. So bringing back these events, but also sort of piggybacking them with guest speakers. I found that at times when you have groups coming in for something else, so for example, an open house or a sports night, to bring in a speaker to piggyback that. So they're there anywhere, and you can divide up the night. So providing more opportunities for community engagement is a focus. We do participate in the Drug-Free Communities. We did participate, and we have applied, and we will apply again this year for the Drug-Free Communities Grant through a partnership with the Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition and Carver Cares and Karen Crusaders. So we'll continue that work going into next year. We'll continue our partnership with the Plymouth County Outreach and the HUB program. Those of you that know, we've talked about this before, but it's a support group for at-risk families. They're an outstanding group. And if we have some concerns with students, they help get them back on their feet. And what I didn't realize about the group is not only do they help get them back on their feet, I mean, they literally will buy them clothes and buy them food, but they help them navigate the challenging sort of system in which they know how to apply for things and get involved in things. So it's really more than just providing services. It's actually helping them navigate some of the challenges of getting through the system. We'll expand our partnerships with businesses and organizations to financially support school-wide initiatives. This is kind of twofold. One is that what we found is that some of the larger organizations in the community would much rather sponsor an event than continually being asked for things. So for example, Rockland Trust would rather sponsor a Credit for Life Fair than be asked for several small donations. So building that partnership, but also making sure that as we develop our internships, that these partnerships with local businesses and organizations are a part of that. Continue to develop and promote the parent-teacher organization. So, you know, the parent-teacher organization at the middle high school is a very different dynamic than it is at the elementary school. And I did poll my social principal group. And a lot of middle high schools, and a lot of high schools in particular, don't have parent-teacher organizations. A lot of that work is done through student government, athletic boosters, music boosters. So one of the things that we've agreed to do is I got our advisor at each grade level to commit to participating as a partnership. So a student and a parent from each grade level and each advisor group would partner with the PTO. So this is a work in progress. But getting, again, student voice, student buy-in with the PTO is going to be a focus of rebuilding that parent-teacher organization. It wouldn't be a traditional PTO that met monthly. It'd be more quarterly. And their focus would be maybe one large fundraiser a year. And then the groups could, you know, apply for funding or be involved in some events and stuff like that. Continue to promote our Pathways programs. Couple of things we did this year, some of you participated in them, was we did a showcase or a mini-fair for the students at the elementary school, which was a huge success, providing exposure for them and seeing some of the opportunities we offer. And then we had our MET showcase. That was a huge success with local industry. So continuing to promote our programs outside of our building would be a focus. And then I talked about aligning the internship program with the Pathways. Continue our PD strand work. So we were very successful, I think, in the way we managed our professional development this year, where we had sort of these subcommittees where people were working on focused things. So instead of everybody doing one big professional development, we allowed them time to work in their subgroups. And those are the subgroups there, and we'll continue that work next year. One of our main focuses that came out of the NEASK visit was to create a vision of the graduate. And ultimately, that's a big part of what we're going to do next year. And really, it's what do we want our students to look like when they graduate high school? So it really would be a list of skills, dispositions, characteristics that the group decides are important. And then it's built into some sort of model or design that becomes the focus of our work. And really, if you look at everything we're talking about today, it all ties back to the vision of the graduate. I had a final school council meeting this evening at 6:00 before we came here. And one of the members said, this is an overwhelming list. And it is, but if you really look at the responsibility, it's broken up among all the stakeholders. So there's pieces that fall on, you know, central office. There's pieces that fall on the students and the teachers and administration. So it is a lot, but it really sort of summarizes the work that we do, you know, each day in our buildings. Enhance and promote the Carver Pathways. That's just really, we're in year three now. So year three, we're continuing to evaluate, add classes, remove classes, and so forth.
Year three?
Yeah, we'll start year three next year.
Wow, that's unbelievable.
So some of our pathways are still growing, and some are looking at what we did in, you know, next year. After we'll have our completion of students who have, you know, navigated through some of our innovation pathways with designation. So just continuing that work. Increasing opportunities to align district-wide curriculum. This is just more of that vertical alignment, making sure that our transitions from fifth to sixth are smooth, and our transitions from eight to nine are smooth. Update the Carrville Middle High School Curriculum Library. This is going to also be a request from NEASK. So we have not received our final NEASK report from our visit, but we, as a result, we've tentatively agreed on five priority areas. And that's the way the Collaborative Conference works, is you have a meeting, you agree on five priority areas. And then for the next year and a half, we focus on those five priorities. And when they come back, they kind of evaluate you on that. So one of the things that they recognized was, yes, we have written curriculum. Yes, it's in shared folders in different departments. But the accessibility for everyone to have access to those is not easily readily available. So their focus is going to say, create some sort of library that supports this work and makes it user-friendly for the community. And then continue our work with the MAP assessments. We will now have two years of data at the end of this year for MAP assessment. So using that to drive instruction. A lot of our teachers are using it now for their student learning goals, their professional practice goals. A lot of our IEPs are written to support this work. So it's definitely been an asset to us. Incorporate the new interactive learning spaces. So we're creating two new spaces next year. We're going to have a real-life size, like a fairly large greenhouse, which is not something we've had in the past. We had that hoop house, but this is going to be a real space, like a learning classroom, and then our TV studio. So implementing those two spaces are going to be key. Continue our partnership. This year, we started a new partnership with a program called Farm to School. Teresa, our Food Service Director, has been very active in that. And it really is working with local suppliers and incorporating some of the... And it really is working with local suppliers and incorporating some of the, 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 the work that goes into that, into our classroom and our food service part of our school. And then we, we've always had some form of dual enrollment and I'll defer to Mr. Neef on that. But we recently have, we didn't have a lot of students over the last couple of years doing it because of the pandemic. But we've recently have an agreement, I don't know if it's a partnership yet, but it's an agreement with Mass City Community College where students would get, be able to take dual enrollment classes in our building next year. And I think we have eight kids signed up where they would get credit for their classes in school and they'll also get college credit.
That's awesome. That's great.
Just as I could add on, so I think, I think we had 15 students show interest. I don't know how many have completed their application yet.
Yeah, I think eight have done it.
And then the district would be funding those courses. So that's in the budget, so we'll be paying for their dual enrollment course. So it's a good partnership we're trying to build up.
Yeah, that's excellent.
And then the last page, last part is our leverage leadership policy and funding. Some of these have been on there. It's something that we, it's annually on here is the excess professional development funds through district support and other funding. So some of our district, some of our professional development presenters, materials and stuff get funded through that. Continue to collaborate with districts to apply for pragmatic funding to move college and career-ready pathways. So again, a lot of that work has been done by Central Office and Meredith in particular. We've been fortunate with the two innovation pathways now to be exposed to a variety of opportunities, which is exciting. We did create a five-year facility plan, so worked with Ron to sort of implement that over the next couple of years. As you know, in the budget, we were approved for this, the classroom modernization and building modernization. So next year, English classes will have an opportunity to look at their learning spaces and reimagine how they want to teach, whether it be desks going to, to tables or tables going to sort of flexible seating. And then we are going to be, we're working right now to finalize the plan for the lobby renovation, which not only gives us an opportunity for students to have lunch and sort of hang out before and after school, but it, they become additional spaces in our building to use for classrooms. And then lastly would be, apply for the grant funding. So we were looking to apply again for a Safe and Supportive Schools grant. If you remember, that grant was what we used for Shadow of Student and some of the other PBIS initiatives that we had done prior to COVID. And then finally, continue to work with our school interventionist and look at potentially long-term funding for this, for that position. So the interventionist position was something we brought in during COVID. It has proved to be a, a very great opportunity for us to support parents. So a lot of times they'll get a call, so-and-so is struggling or behind. We can, you know, with, you can always use teacher support, but sometimes they just need a one-on-one session for a couple of days and it gets them back on track. So looking at a long-term sustainability for the interventionist position potentially.
That's excellent.
And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Yes, lots of excitement. I can't believe it's going to be year three of Pathways. That's just mind-numbing. Excellent, though. It is great.
Exciting.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It is nine o'clock, so I am going to call a brief recess. I'm sure we all need a break. We have a long agenda ahead of us. So we will reconvene in, say, 10 minutes. Give everyone a chance to get up, stretch their legs and so. All right.
I think you, yeah, I think you need to make a motion and a vote to recess, to return to session.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we have a short recess, recess reconvening at, say, 9:10.
Yes. I second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? See you at 9:10.
Did you call the meeting back in order?
So I call this meeting back to order at 9:11 PM.
What's that? It's fine?
Sorry. Oh, okay.
I also can't get video, but that might be fun.
Are we unmuted? All right, it's that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so I would like to call this meeting back to order now that everyone can hear us.
At nine?
Oh, sorry. My apologies. 9:11. Okay, and this brings us to the elementary reading curriculum with Dr. Meredith Erickson and Kate Moore.
So we're excited to have Dr. Erickson and Kate Moore here this evening to give an overview of the process that the teachers and the administration went through to select a new elementary reading curriculum for next year. So they're going to take us through and I will bring the presentation up.
So the good news is we started off with about 45 slides, but we've expanded it to over 100 slides.
Excellent. That's great.
They're going to do one slide a minute, so I want one slide second.
A second, okay.
Anyway.
Good luck, Scott.
All right, so thank you. All levity aside, and I think we have to have levity. This is the culmination of ongoing work over a couple of years and some of you are aware of it. So the idea is to make sure that the community and those viewing at home understand kind of the process that we went through. So like Superintendent Neef said, I am joined by Kate Moore. For those of you that don't know her, Kate Moore is our reading, our literacy coach and our data guru and our researcher and is very experienced both as a leader in special education and literacy as well. So I have relied heavily on her throughout this process. And when we get to the good stuff, I'm going to take the microphone and toss it over so that she can do her magic. So in terms of big picture itinerary, we want to talk about why we are proposing a change for our literacy model at the elementary school based on data, survey that, survey that we have used to collect data from staff, our current research base, and then something called the ideal classroom protocol. We're also going to do a little bit of an overview of where we've been over the past couple of years, the work of the council, the recommended model, and then what that entails. So for those of you that have students in elementary school or neighbors that have students in elementary school, how their lives might be a little bit different in terms of learning how to read and then what we're going to do to prepare for 2022, 2023. So for our journey overview, why change? So back in 2018, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education contacted me. At the time, I was running the Assistant Superintendent's Group for the South Shore. And they came down and presented some research around the importance of high-quality materials based on research that most teachers do what we ask them to do with the materials that we give them. And they cited a couple of different resources that I'll reference later on in our conversation. But one of those is called Ed Reports, which at the time was new and also considered maybe more important than it is right now. And the intention behind that was they went through and they vetted very common curricula that existed throughout the country and tried to give it kind of a stoplight rating of red, yellow, green. And the idea was if you were somewhere in the red or you were somewhere in the yellow, you wanted to head towards the green in terms of is the curriculum aligned with what it is that you're supposed to be teaching? And then more importantly, are the instructional strategies that are promoted therein really useful for students and help them learn? So that's the intention behind it. So at the time, we looked at both our math and reading options. They were both in the red. So we endeavored to pick a new math program. We went through a process where we studied that in committee for a year. And as you well know, we now have bridges. And with the exception of COVID, we had a very kind of clear articulated plan on how to phase that in. And I'm just going to pause for a second and say that it is very easy for people that have not been practitioners in the classroom before to think, oh, this change is great. We buy the books, we give them to the teachers and it just works. But the reality is it takes a significant amount of time, especially when there's a pedagogical shift or new resources to learn. So I just want to applaud our teachers. They do an amazing job of supporting these initiatives and doing what we ask. So it's so important that we envelop their voice and really exalt their, their ideas throughout this process. So with math somewhat taken care of, we ran into a little bit of a snafu with reading. And that's because the program we were using, Reading Street, no longer exists. They said, we will let you limp along through an online portal, but we're cutting you off at the end of 2021, 2022, which brings us to today. So we recognized the need to go ahead and make sure that we had a solution for teachers. And with that, we began a rocky start because like with all things in education, there are varying, varying research bases and varying ideas about what it is that makes for quality reading instruction. So another thing that we looked at, and I'm sorry, I'm moving my PowerPoint thinking that it's moving up there. Another thing that we wanted to look at is what our current reading program that we did use, how that kind of manifested in terms of student outcomes. And Scott, if you will go to the next slide, it shows kind of a linear progression of where we are. So we had about 10 years of a general decline in reading and granted, there are ups and downs. You can see the data. But all in all, from where we started and where we ended, we noticed that our students were struggling to achieve at the levels that we thought that they were capable of. And then also for the amount of effort that our teachers were putting into the Reading Street program. So we addressed this with staff. We talked to staff about this and we asked them to complete a survey actually right before we headed into COVID. So that month of March 2020. We explained all of this background information that I just shared with you and asked them, what do you want in a new reading program? You've had, I don't know, 10, 20 years with Reading Street. Let's figure out what we can do. So we had a great return rate, especially considering the fact that we were headed into this great unknown. 80% of our faculty surveyed completed the survey, including all of our third through fifth grade ELA teachers, 88% of our classroom teachers and then a variety of other positions that are directly related to helping students learn how to read, especially students that may struggle with that. We asked about likes and dislikes of the current reading program. What our teachers wanted in terms of organization. So what they had was a big kit with lots of different supplemental books that where you would take the kit out and you'd bring out the different books and you had to be on this page on this day and grab that particular resource. And we asked them, is that working for you? Are you utilizing these big kit and kaboodle situations? What is it that you want? We asked about what kind of instruction are you looking for and how are we supporting or considering our diverse learners? So as an example of the things that we asked them, here's a question. What do you want as far as features in a literacy program? And everybody said, we want an easy opportunity to match the, their students' reading ability with texts that they can read so that they're growing within their zone of proximal development. We also asked them these other components. I won't read them all to you, but this is an example of some of the questions that we asked. Just to do a quick word cloud, the number one thing that came up is teachers felt that our former reading program was disengaging for students and for teachers. They wanted something that was much more student-centered, that provided the opportunity for teachers to meet the learner where they're at, because we know that reading ability and the skill development varies a lot by grade level. So the idea of giving a one-size-fits-all text to students just does not leverage current best practice. And they wanted something that was effective and individualized and authentic. So I told you that I brought our in-house guru. And Kate is going to talk a little bit about the research base that we felt was most relevant to support our learners.
It's a lot of pressure. So when we met as a council and even as a whole staff, we did some professional development around the most prominent research in reading. And some of that research is Scarborough's Reading Rope. And so what this says is that there are two areas to teaching reading, one being language comprehension and one being word recognition. So you need to have knowledge in both areas to be a competent reader. And so when we were looking at programs, this, this research drove what programs we were looking at. And additionally, the research also. The research has this simple view of reading, which is very similar to Scarborough's Reading Rope. But it says in essence that you need to have word recognition skills. So the phonological awareness, the decoding pieces, the phonemic awareness, sight word recognition and language comprehension. And if you don't have those two pieces, you won't become a skilled reader.
If you, yeah, advance or go back one slide, sorry. We always put this up and we look at it as a mathematical problem. And the benefit to that is just recognizing that you can have like the best science of reading phonics program on the left, but without the language comprehension, you're multiplying something plus or times zero. You're still going to get zero. So that idea that you really need to have both ends of that. And I think that there, over the past two to three decades, there's a lot of research that says that we have done a great job of creating the strongest generation of decoders. So Schmoker did a lot of research on that and said, we really are able to have students do a lot of phonics and phonemic awareness, but we have actually developed the worst generation of comprehenders because they access so much information that if they don't understand what they're reading, it doesn't really matter that they can sound it out. You need to have both. So the other thing that we did is Kate referenced, is we worked with the whole faculty in terms of this research and having them respond to it, what they thought about it. And then we mirrored an experience that we used with our Math Curriculum Council, where we spent time asking teachers to get into grade-level teams and to just talk about and then define, what is your ideal literacy classroom? Like based on this current research, based on the data we showed you, based on what you've lived, based on what you know your students need, what is it that would make like a perfect literacy environment? So we asked them, what would students be doing? What would teachers be doing? What resources would you utilize? And then I think most importantly, what are students going to leave with by the time that they end instruction in your class? So we used those results to come up with our school-wide vision of literacy. You can see the picture on the right. But really, two of our curriculum council members kind of dug into the ideal classroom protocol and the information that they received from teachers. A draft was sent to all teachers. People weighed in, revisions were suggested and incorporated. Two final versions were sent out for a whole school vote. And then finally, the one that you see here on the next slide is what we came up with. So I won't read that to you, but you have access to it. And really, we wanted this to drive the ultimate decision of if this is our vision and this is where we're going, how do we get there? So the other thing that we did is we tried to keep staff apprised throughout the whole experience. I'll talk in a second about our Literacy Curriculum Council. And it was not the whole staff. We had to have representatives from each grade level. So we wanted to make sure that not only did they serve as like a conduit between the council and their grade level, but that we just sent out publications like this to make sure everyone was in the know, that they had access to the materials, that they could go in and see the work that the council was doing throughout. So to get to the Literacy Curriculum Council, you can see that we have representatives from special education, from the reading team, from each grade level. Additionally, administration from both the district and building level and Kate helped facilitate. And our general journey on the next slide was to have a launch party for the Curriculum Council in 2020, where we presented curated research and podcasts and articles and we asked them to go read it. We were going to get back together a few months later. And then COVID really took over our lives. So we had to put our meetings kind of on hold for a year. And then last June, the council got back together and worked for three days after the school year had ended to review data and to develop a rubric that would help us rate kind of three different options in terms of a reading program. All three were supposed to meet the needs of what we were looking for. And then, as I mentioned, they were a liaison for their grade-level professional learning communities. And at the end of our three days, we asked teachers, based on this kind of dive that you've done into the three programs, we would like to, to get you the resources that you need to informally pilot one, two, or three of these programs. You can do anything that you'd like. And we've reflected on that. We could have done a very formal pilot, but we felt like it would be unfair to teachers in the midst of coming back from coronavirus to say, we want you lockstep to be able to do this. So we said, So we said, we're going to take a more laissez-faire approach. We're going to be really respectful of your professional demands, but we really want feedback. We want you to go in, try these on, tell us what you like, tell us what you don't like. We'll have monthly meetings starting in October. You can come and we can dialogue. We can set up opportunities for you to talk to other teachers, which they asked for. They said, if we can hear from other districts and potentially do site visits and continue to report out on our informal pilots, that will help. So on this next slide, you see the three programs that we looked at. The two on the left, American Reading Corporation or ARC and Expeditionary Learning, both have all greens on the ed reports, which I mentioned earlier. And at the time that we were looking at this units of study was not rated in terms of ed reports. So going through this, we said, what are some solutions that are going to increase engagement? How are we going to make sure that students are not only learning to read, but they actually are actively reading and they have the opportunity to have books in their hands? And this is just a general overview. You can read more about the different components. And then as the year went on and we had site visits and teachers tried different things on, they had some access to some of these online. They, we were able to order through a grant, a couple of kind of in-person groups of materials. We asked them to come back and to continue. So you'll see in terms of the site visits, sorry.
So we did four site visits, two to Mannamette Elementary School in Plymouth and then one to Furness, Federal Furnace and one to Bourne. And our first site visit was to Mannamette, where we were looking at units of study. Teachers were extremely excited when they came back from that visit. They were excited about the level of rigor that they saw in those classrooms, about student engagement, the level of differentiation, really meeting students where they are, and the student voice and choice that they saw happening. They were so excited that they came back and talked to their colleagues and said, and the colleagues said, we want to go see this in action. So then we set up a, we were able to set up a second site visit with the support of administration. And those teachers came back and were really excited. Then we did another site visit to Federal Furnace because we wanted to see a different school and different grade levels. And again, we saw that there was this level of engagement through using units of study and just a real excitement around reading and writing. We also went to Bourndale to look at ARC, American Reading Corporation. And there were many positives that we saw in that program. It just didn't quite align with all of the research that we had done and all of our data points. But again, we saw a lot of positives in that program. When we came back from the site visits, we did a SWOT analysis, which I think is on. And so we really looked at, and SWOT stands for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities for growth, and threats. So what would impede us implementing these changes? And again, we really saw that units of study aligned with all of the work that we had done and all of the research that we had done. Additionally, sorry, back to the previous slide, we had focus groups. So our special education staff wanted to talk to special educators that had been using a variety of programs. So we set up those focus groups to have special educators and, special educators in other districts speak with our special educators to see how the programs ran. And then.
So then we got together. And I have to tell you, we have been happily stressed throughout this whole process because we don't take this decision lightly at all. And we understand that there is no silver bullet in terms of, in terms of selecting a model. But we were so intent on trying to provide teachers what they had asked for in terms of engagement and then to really listen to their concerns. And one of the concerns that they had is really the first bullet there, which is for teachers that are used to using something like Reading Street, this is going to be a pedagogical shift. And we talked to other districts that had used this and they said, yes, that will happen. But what happens is you're investing in teacher capacity and your teachers work so hard anyways. Instead of relying on the kit, they're really going to rely on what we know is good about reading. So it's investing in our teaching force that way. If we advance to the next slide, I just want to explain a little bit about how the curriculum council voted. And then Kate is going to kind of carry us through what this looks like. So we decided that there were three options moving forward. And we, in our curriculum council, discussed these three options. And then we asked people to do like a secret ballot kind of vote, just because we wanted to make sure everyone felt comfortable voting without it necessarily being tethered back to them. And we really were not sure where people were going to lie. So I'm actually going to go from option three to one. So option three was, we're not ready to make a decision yet. We have gone through this process over the past year. Maybe next year, we take the year and we really formally pilot units of study and expeditionary learning. And then from there, make a decision. Another option was to move forward with units of study. At that point, it was definitely the front runner that most people felt comfortable with. But we said, you know what? Maybe not everybody feels comfortable with this or maybe some dissenting voice or people may want to just kind of wait a year and see. So the second option would be, you can opt in if you want to or you can wait a year and then see kind of where things land. And then option one is to just do a full adoption and to mirror the experience of the math curriculum council. And that is to do a phased in approach, being really responsive to not only the revised versions that are coming out for some of these programs, but really looking at what our teachers told us they need. For example, 4th and 5th grade really want to start with writing and they feel like there's a deficit right now in word study and they want to make sure that they have the opportunity to teach vocabulary and etymology. So those were the options. So Kate and I said, all right, you go vote and then we'll come back. And the response was overwhelmingly, we want to adopt units of study, which completely surprised us. I'm a total geek, so I thought this was like great, right? I'm sure everyone else is like, all right, we have a decision, yay. So on the next slide, I just want to say we captured, we asked everybody in their secret ballot to justify why they made the decision that they did. So these were some of the things that we heard. So it's time for a change and the level of engagement, the more cohesive program than what we're experiencing now. So that was one reason that they voted for this full adoption. Someone else said, I feel it's the best fit for our school. Someone else said, I don't like the idea of splitting up with teachers doing different things. So that speaks more to that option two and why someone may have not voted for that. And I think we need to make a decision to have a direction for next year. The next set said, we owe it to the kids. There will be some challenges for us, but all of our decisions should be based on what's in the best interest of our students. And then someone else said, I like that it's in small pieces, year by year. I think that some people, if some people chose to do it, which was option two, it would be difficult with schedules and it would be isolating for some. So those are the quotes that we captured, but there was more of that, a lot of those kind of same pieces. So now the question is, well, what is units of study? And what is it going to look like for our students? And so Kate is going to walk us through what that will look like.
So the first piece that we voted on was, or chose to adopt, is the units of study phonics. So in 2019, units of study came out with a phonics program because we need that word recognition, the decoding piece. And units of study phonics is, it's separate from the reading program and separate from the writing program, but it's really cohesive. So you'll see elements of the phonics in the reading and in the writing. And it's a systematic approach to teaching phonics. It's the synthetic approach, which is by the science of reading research, that is best approach to be using. So they use the synthetic approach. It's very hands-on and multisensory. Kids are learning through games and singing and chanting and it's really a joyous way to learn phonics and those basic skills. And then here's the progression of the phonics piece because we know it's so important for students. So it really moves from your basic concepts, concepts of print, all the way up through learning conventions and vocabulary within that K to 2 progression. And then units of study uses the workshop model. So the reading and writing programs use this workshop model. It starts with a mini lesson, which is often taught using a mentor text. Not always, but it's usually taught using a mentor text. And then students go off and they work independently or with a partner while a teacher walks around the room and meets with small groups of students or conferences with small groups of students. And during that time, students are applying the skills that they learned in the mini lesson to their work in authentic texts. Then the teacher usually has a mid-workshop teaching point where she reminds the students of the skill that they're working on for that lesson. And then it ends with a share. So it's, it really builds a community of readers in just the model that it is.
Some of you might recall, or this may be new information for some of you, that we actually, prior to adopting Bridges, we launched a math workshop model about nine years ago and rolled it out. And one of the things that teachers said was most valuable about the math workshop model was that they knew exactly where their students were, which is such a helpful component when you're trying to decode, not just in reading, but decode what each student needs and really get them what they need. They felt the fact that they had an opportunity to conference frequently with students allowed them to be able to say, this is what Kelly's going to need and this is what Jen's going to need and Stephanie, as opposed to just kind of waiting for an assessment.
I just also like to add too, that one of the biggest ways that we can move students along is by conferencing. So that because that's such a part of the units of study, the goal is that we can really see kids move along. And then just to speak to the reading units of study. So for the K to 2 reading units of study, it's, like I said, it's separate from the phonics, but there's a lot of cohesion between what they're doing in phonics and then in the reading units of study. The reading units also provide the language comprehension piece. So those two pieces that we talked about earlier, it's, we're getting the decoding and the word recognition through phonics. But then the units of study reading is really also meeting the need to do language comprehension. So building background knowledge and comprehension skills and all of those sort of skills that kids need. And then I thought it would be prudent to have just a day in the life of what the workshop model looks like with units of study. So you can see here that we have the mini lesson, then there's independent time and small group time, that mid-workshop teaching point, and then wrapping up with a share. And based on the literacy council discussion, our data meetings and NWA data, grades four and five really wanted a word study program. And they felt like they, and, and we agree with them, that they are, they have a lot of elements of the workshop model already underway in their classrooms through doing novel studies. So this was an area of need for them and an area of need for our students. So we're looking at word study programs that are systematic in approach to teach etymology and origins of words. And then we will roll out units of study in later years. Oh, that's right. So, so now circling around to the units of study writing, that will be the first phase of implementation for 4th and 5th grade. And they are rewriting the units of study writing. So we don't want to adopt something that's going to be rewritten in January. And it's coming out in January. So we thought, let's do word study and then we'll roll out the units of study writing when we have the latest and greatest version. And so that will be rolled out in 2023, 24. And then we do. We do have some teachers that dabbled with units of study, did some more informal piloting. So we asked for their feedback and it was really exciting to hear what they had to say. So one teacher said, after completing a few lessons in units of study writing, I only wish that I had used units of study all year. The students' writing improved and gave me chills as I read through their final pieces. My students were engaged and excited. In fact, they even asked to stay in for recess to continue to write. My students' writing progressed to levels I have never seen. They were engaged and enthusiastic about writing. And then we had a third grade teacher who said, now that my students are reading real, authentic books, I am enjoying my job more than I have in years. It has been a privilege and a delight this year to see the children develop a true love of literature. And this was from a second grade teacher about the prospect of using units of study. I am very excited that our school will be moving forward with units of study as our reading and writing curriculum beginning next year. This program will support children with their reading skills and encourage them to become active participants in their reading. The teaching approach engages students and offers choices, all while helping children grow as readers. It will help all children see themselves as readers and writers, something that I feel has been missing for a while. And then lastly, having the flexibility to read novels with students at their levels in small groups has made such a difference to their interest level, enthusiasm and growth. The children love meeting to talk about their novels. So as we look forward to next year and how we'll be rolling out materials, as opposed to other big box programs, units of study really has us invest in books, authentic texts and professional development so that we can build our teachers' capacity to be teachers of reading and to get books in kids' hands that they're excited and interested in. So that's what we'll be starting to look at as far as ordering. There are guidebooks that we'll be using that will help guide teachers along.
And then just in terms of professional learning, we had, we've had lots of conversations with teachers over the past several years about this. And they've been really honest and shared their concerns about moving away, particularly in some of the younger grades, moving away from something as structured and as known as Reading Street and kind of having to venture into something that relies less on a kit and more on their own, their own abilities as reading teachers. And so in these conversations, something that came up is we had a reading, or a elementary teacher say to us, you know, the only thing I've ever known as a reading teacher is Reading Street. I came here, this is the only thing I've ever taught. What I really need training on is how to be a strong reading teacher and no program is going to do that for me. I need that professional learning and that opportunity. So we took that to heart, particularly because in that meeting, everyone happened to agree with that teacher. Like, yes, what we really need is training, not necessarily in identifying morphology and orthography, but really like, how do you work with these students in front of you to make sure that everybody's growing to their full potential and that we're not leaving students behind that way? So it's great using grant money. We have a solid and strong plan moving forward over the next year and working with Kate as our coach to be able to provide ongoing job embedded professional development that is super relevant and customized, which we all know that those are aspects of high-quality PD. We also have some voluntary options for teachers before the school year starts because we know that this is going to be new for them. So we thank you for your attention. We kept it under 100 slides, but we're totally open to feedback from the committee and any questions that you might have. Anyone have, anyone have any questions?
Well, I think it was a very thorough presentation. Good job.
Great job and thank you for everything that you do. I have to say that this year, my daughter's in second grade and I think her teacher started doing some of this at the, towards the end of the year because she brought her writing book home today and I was shocked at how well, how, how well her writing is in general, but also the thought process, the patterns, the patterns. but also the thought process, the patterns, the putting together a story, the whole thing. Very impressive, and I really appreciate this presentation. Thank you, great job.
Thank you.
There's less bodies in the room, so it's not as hot anymore. I'm like freezing. I mean, I could put my sweater on, but my feet are cold.
Thank you both so very much. And thank you to the curriculum team for all of their input. Very exciting. And I know Meredith had shared some additional information with Jen and I when we'd had some concerns earlier this year. And it's just great to hear that you've garnered such feedback from all of the stakeholders that are involved in this. And we really appreciate all of your efforts and including them and having those important conversations. So I'm excited for it going forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to thank them as well because all the staff who was involved in the literacy council, you know, they put in a lot of hours and time. And Meredith and Kate did a great job leading the work. And Ruby certainly was in support. You don't want to forget Ruby back there.
Thank you.
Ruby spent a lot of time with them as well.
A ton of time. We could not have done it without her support.
I definitely think it's awesome that all the staff were so engaged and so supportive of the decision to adopt.
I am too. Like I mentioned before, we were surprised with what, like the fact that they wanted to fully adopt. And I have to say, I mean, we know this anyways as educators, that there are going to be bumps, right? We're going to move forward, and there are going to be some days that people are like, why did we choose this? But I think the thing that we're most excited about is whether we have taught in a model similar to this before or whether we know folks, you know, throughout the state that use this in their schools. I think the fact that it aligns so well with the opportunity to have books in the hands of learners and have them loving reading, that was a huge piece that our teachers wanted because they recognized that that had been missing for a while. And I mean, we had a third grade teacher that like almost knocked down the door to Kate's office, like, you wouldn't believe what my kids are doing. So it's awesome. We're excited.
That is so great. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Does that bring us to recommendations from the superintendent?
It does. It brings us to recommendations. And A, we did, we've covered A. So we'll move on to B. School lunch presentation and an update, which Ron was, Ron's going to test it.
Thank you, Ron.
So that is a tough act to follow. And I'm just going to be talking a little bit about lunches. I'll be brief with your time. What you have in front of you is a recommendation for food service pricing for FY23, the 2223 school year. I'll give you a little bit of context and background before I get into the proposal and then field any questions that you might have. If you're not aware, so your food service program is actually one of the few programs in your school district that is not funded directly with your tax dollars. It is funded separately. So it's funded entirely through a combination of fees collected for lunch and breakfast, and then reimbursements that come from the federal level funneled through the state essentially. Through the pandemic, as I think we've talked about a few times with the committee, the federal government through the USDA actually funded your state lunches for all children. So lunch was essentially free for all kiddos, which saw a massive increase in participation for all the obvious reasons. And that happened through the pandemic, so two, almost two years of that. Unfortunately, Congress has not continued the program. It was not reauthorized in this last funding round. And so the onus has then been reflected back onto the states. Each state can sort of determine their direction. Massachusetts did explore and has continued to explore a model in which the state of Massachusetts, the Commonwealth, would support free lunches essentially for all kiddos. Ultimately, the Massachusetts, you know, House Ways and Means Committee had a funding model, but it wasn't picked up by the Senate. So it's not currently in the state's FY23 budget. The bottom line is some bipartisan support for this model, but because it's not in the FY23 budget, we really have to start thinking as a local community around what this will look like here in Carver. And so my recommendation for you here is just some pricing for FY23. And that's based on a couple of factors. First, you take a look at the bottom. You see your last time we had pricing was actually FY20. So it's been a few years since we even looked at pricing at all because that was the last time we were charging for any foods. Your breakfast was $1.75, lunch at the elementary $2.50, and lunch at the middle high school $2.75. We did some analysis for the food service program. We're seeing just over a 40% increase in costs. And so our proposal would be to reflect that increase in costs on our FY23 pricing. Therefore, recommended pricing would be $2.25 for breakfast and $3.50 for lunch at either the middle school or high school. A few caveats to that, they're important to keep in the back of your mind. Obviously, any child who qualifies for free reduced lunch would either have free or reduced pricing based on wherever they land there. And ultimately, if a bill is passed, so if there's some 11th hour Hail Mary at Beacon Hill, and they do pass this, then these prices would only be for a second meal. That is, the bill currently would apply for all first meals. But if your kiddo is like my son, he almost always gets two lunches because he's like, he's 15 and is a bottomless pit. So if that's the case, the first meal will be free, obviously, and the second meal would be the proposed pricing. My request of the committee is to consider passing this this evening so that we can start putting our final budgets in place for the food service program and then follow up with communication to our community with how to sign up for the My School Bucks and do all those things that we used to do before the pandemic that we need to redevelop that muscle memory for as families and community. Yes, most of that actually is done now automatically. So back when I was a kid, you had to put through forms. The vast majority of free and reduced lunch applications, and I use that as an air quotes, is done automatically through SNAP. The state does that essentially. So if you're receiving some kind of benefit or qualify for benefits even at the state level, it's usually automatically enrolled. And then we do a process to sort of cross-reference that if there are any kiddos who might have fallen through the cracks. Have you have questions for me? I hope to have an answer, any questions you have about all things food service or rationale for the recommendation?
I think we all have the same look on our face. I just hate the increase. When I was doing the math and it's like, you know, $5 a week. So I mean, we were at $50 a month before, now it's going to be $70 a month. Like, that's just a lot of money. I'm just, I'm really disappointed in legislature because, you know, everything is getting so expensive. And I just don't want to see any kid not have access to food.
I'd agree with you. I would just underscore that if there was ever a situation in which a family can't afford any fee for food, A, we'd give the kid food immediately. So even if it was that day and they didn't have it, our, our policy is feed the student. We'll sort out the money later. And then B, the situation in which a family can't afford that, and they're not, for whatever reason, already picked up by the state process, we're going to follow up with the state to make sure they're able to be, go through that process with the state. That doesn't make it easier or better, the fact that that, prices have increased on everything, food especially. But I just want to underscore that functional component of it.
Right. And our qualifying student percentage for free and reduced lunch isn't high enough for us to apply to be a free district, correct?
Not across the board.
I know that's an option in some other districts in the state.
That's correct.
Depending on where your percentages lie. So I just wanted to make sure that that hadn't changed for our community.
It has not.
So I say that clearly, we need to advocate as best as we can, so.
What state senators we need to be reaching out to?
Right, exactly. I mean, we can send a letter, we can, we can collectively, you know, we can reach out individually. But I really think that this is something that I really hope that they, like you said, that there's a Hail Mary and that they consider this. So I would like to see us, because I think, I think we're all in agreement. None of us are thrilled. I'm not saying that you're, not trying to insinuate that you're thrilled.
I'm the money guy, and I always bring bad news. I get it. It's okay.
I know, there's probably, like, I don't need to ask this because I know, but these are like the lowest prices that we could do, right? Without having to, like, to have us at like, I mean, I know this program's not trying to make money. We're trying to break even, right?
Right, we want to try to stay in the black for the program because otherwise we have to come to the school committee and request transfers of tax dollars to keep the program afloat. I have the FY23 projections here. Your projected expenses for FY23 is $602,287. Projected revenue with the current pricing is $546,986. So you're shy, projecting to be shy $55,000. We, that's why we're recommending it. We did the projections when we're going to be short. And again, you're working on pricing that hasn't been changed in several years. Not to boy with some of the other details, there's actually a state minimum requirement for reimbursement essentially. And right now, we're actually below that state minimum requirement. That is, if you don't charge a certain amount, you only get reimbursed for that certain amount for the free and reduced lunches and that sort of a thing. So if we maintain that, we're actually going to lose some, a small portion of the reimbursement anyway. Again, that's just for free and reduced lunches.
Right. Do you have any information on average, how much it goes up each year?
Say more about that?
Well, you know, we haven't had a price change in two years. But do these charges for lunches normally go up every year? And if, you know, approximately how much?
I don't know that. I can get the historicals, I don't have that. And it changes from district to district. So any district can charge whatever they'd like. There's a function that the state puts out every couple of years that sort of adjusts your reimbursement rate. Yeah, but I don't have your historicals. I could pull those, but I don't have it at fingertips.
I can speak to that anecdotally saying, we historically have not raised the prices every year. So in the six years I've been superintendent, this might be the second, third time. Might only be the second time.
I think it's my second.
Yeah, so we, I will say we do not raise the prices every year if we look at the historical data. But I can't, I can't tell you specifically what it was prior to the $1.75, $2.50, $2.75.
I mean, but I think you spoke to that it is kind of a sign of the times with inflation and the cost of living increasing.
Yeah, and we, again, we source our products. So we use a lot of state procurement to source our products at the lowest possible rate. I will say one of the things that is important to keep programmatically in our minds is that we've really made a big emphasis on scratch cooking and giving our students the highest quality products that we can versus maybe what we all grew up on, which was like chicken nuggets every day. And I know kids love chicken nuggets, but it's not the most nutritious thing all the time. My point is there is a cost to that, right? And so to ensure that we're getting higher quality ingredients, those do just have a cost. That's the, that's the cost of unfortunately doing that kind of business.
This is tough.
Nobody wants to make a motion.
Don't also do it.
This, this is, this is tough because I feel, I just feel like with, you know, inflation, the price of gas, I mean, with all of these things, all the financial burdens that families are currently facing right now, it's just, it's really difficult.
Yeah, because this is going to be a hard jump going from like free to paying something at all.
Yep.
True.
Yep.
I mean, I've, I've been paying for lunches because I have two kids that like to buy doubles, too. My second grader mostly likes to buy doubles.
I mean, to be fair, they didn't have free lunches before COVID. So, I mean, this, we all knew that this part of it at least was going to end at some point.
Yeah.
I'm not happy about the price increase. I'm not sure that I see that there's a choice, though. I mean, the cost of everything is going up, and I really don't want to see us in the red either.
Agreed. I know, but yeah. If that's what the number crunch comes out to, it's not like. Well, I think everyone that sees this will see that we all have heavy hearts about having to make this decision.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I will say this year, we've been in the black for the program, but it's primarily because almost every student participates, and it's 100% funded from feds. So that's, it's inevitable, right? And I'd say most often, your food service programs, just anecdotally, walk that very fine line. They're essentially break-even programs, as they should be. You keep a reserve for about three months of operational funds, as you would with any business, to cover costs for whatever. Your oven breaks, or you need a new freezer part, or whatever it might be. But this is not a, my point being, this is not a for-profit enterprise. It's simply an arm of the institution that covers zone costs.
And just to clarify, Ron, you said even raising these prices to this, we're still going to have a bit of a deficit?
No. If you kept your current price, your deficit runs at $55,311.
Okay, so but if we don't, we don't have a deficit.
You're in the black.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, obviously, the last thing we want to do was have to cut something because we don't put through the price increase.
Exactly. So I'll make a motion. I move to set the price of school breakfast at $2.25 and school lunch at the elementary school and middle high school at $3.50 for the 2022 and 2023 school year.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's like the saddest aye vote ever. But, yeah, and, and, you know, thank you. Thank you, Ron, for being so patient with our despair. Must have been really fun to go after that awesome presentation.
This was amazing.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, so that brings us to C, which is the anti-racism resolution. So would you want me to read the intro?
Oh, no, I will. So in 2020, the Mass Association of School Committees developed an anti-racism resolution for school committees to consider adopting, really as part of the social justice movement after the death of George Floyd. The goal of the resolution is for the school committee to make a public statement that supports and promotes diversity, equity, and inclusion. Stephanie is actually, I know she's been, as we all know, Stephanie's been doing a lot of work in her leadership role with the Mass Association of School Committees, realized that this resolution had been passed and wanted to bring it before the committee tonight for the committee to consider.
Correct.
Child, hold on.
Okay. In the spirit of supporting our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee is really why I wanted to bring this forward. Thus, also the fact that I didn't realize that this was adopted two years ago. I do want to say that I did revise this and edit it for our district so it focuses on, you know, our students, our staff, our school community, without this being something political. I just want to be clear that this is just to support that mission of providing a safe and supportive environment for all of our teachers and for all of our staff. So I will read this. And then if someone wants to make a motion to adopt it, it could be something that we could put on our website, including our manuals. And just have for, if the DEI committee would want to use it for anything or not, but just so that people are aware of our support. So, Carver School Committee Anti-Racism Resolution. Whereas schools have the responsibility to equip students with their civil right of obtaining a free and appropriate public education, it is the responsibility of each school to ensure we create welcoming community for all students. And whereas it is the responsibility that every district provide to all district staff, including school committee members, annual professional development on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And whereas every district will commit to recruiting and retaining a diverse and culturally responsive teaching workforce. And whereas every district will examine their policies for institutional and systemic racialized practices and implement change with sustainable policies that are evidence-based. And whereas every district will incorporate into their curriculum the history of racial oppression and works by Black authors and works from diverse perspectives. And whereas we as school district leaders can no longer remain silent to the issues of racism and hate that continue to plague our public and private institutions. Resolved that the Carver Public School District must guarantee that racist practices are eradicated and diversity, equity, and inclusion is embedded in practice for our students, families, faculty, and staff. So that is what I am proposing that we as a district adopt. Does anyone have any questions about it or why?
I have one question. So I feel like in reading this, I'm just, this is just more of like a curiosity than a, well, I guess it's a question. In reading this, I feel like we're already doing all of this with maybe the exception of, I haven't received any DEI professional development as a school committee member yet, but I know it was discussed that we might include that in our summer outing. So other than that, would this affect any change from what we're already doing in the district? Or is this more of like an affirmation of what we're doing in the district? I'm just curious.
I, I would see it more as an affirmation because we've actually, we've, as you know, we did some professional development over the last couple of years in diversity and inclusion. We're planning on continuing that work next year for the staff. You know, I, I think we look at the line of where every district will incorporate into their curriculum history of racial oppression. So if you look at our US history curriculum, there clearly is a, there's a civil rights movement unit. There's a unit specifically about racial oppression.
We do Black History Month.
Yeah, we do Black History Month. And we're also, I'm, you know, we did when Bob Yul- Yeah, we do Black History Month. And we're also, I'm, you know, we did when Bob Yul came, the English Department Chair, and did a presentation on the English curriculum.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I lost my zoom.
We got kicked out of Zoom. Did we go over your time limit?
I guess so.
I don't think there is. Or, oh, do we have a time limit or not?
The internet went down.
Okay.
Oh, we dropped. Dropped our internet.
Oh. Yep. We're back.
Sorry, girl.
Okay.
I'm back.
Mine's still connected.
I'm still connected.
Mine's still trying to connect.
Yeah, listen, I sound like my backdrop picture.
Interesting. That's a first, that we've collectively been kicked out of Zoom.
There's always something going on.
I feel like tonight there's been a little tech vortex.
There has been, for sure.
I'm not reconnecting.
I'm actually not either.
No.
No.
Nope.
Well, I'm on the internet. Yeah, I'm gonna sign in again.
All right.
I will say, I don't think I'm. Actually, the internet's not back up.
Because we're not going anywhere.
I don't think the internet's up.
I'm showing it's connected.
You're connected, but it's not up.
Oh.
Because if you try to go to any other sites, anything?
It's not working.
It's not working. So that means that there's probably a service outage rather than, yep.
Oh, my. All righty then.
Oh, this happens to me on a weekly basis at my house, so. Hence why I know what's kind of going on.
Okay, so in that case.
I know it's late, but do you want to text Stephen to see? Is it access point issue or? Yeah, I'm not going anywhere either.
All righty then.
So wonderful.
Yep.
Here's being recorded.
I'm getting unable to connect.
Me too.
So, okay, so.
I think we have a motion.
We have a motion.
Yes.
I will put it in. I move to support the anti-racism resolution as presented.
Aye, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. So we are all set. So.
We're going to affirmation of school committee protocols?
Yes.
So in the past, when we've added new members to join the committee, we reviewed and reaffirmed our school committee protocols. These protocols were actually established soon after I became superintendent in two thousand sixteen. We actually had a training with the Mass Association of School Committees. Dorothy Presser came out and we did a one-day training. And these protocols were developed as part of that process with our work with the Mass Association of School Committees. So it's a recommendation that we review these protocols again this evening. And I would recommend to make a motion to reaffirm them. Will we have any questions about the protocols? I don't know if you want to, if you want me to go through and read them or?
There's twelve of them. Has everyone had a chance to review them prior to our meeting this evening? Do you have any questions about any of them?
No.
Or any concerns, any comments? I just think it's good for us to take a moment and pause and just reflect. Every year. It's just a good, good practice. So, okay, so I guess we'll skip the reading. So with that, I would entertain a motion to affirm.
I move to affirm the school committee protocols as presented this evening.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. No further discussion. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
As unanimous. Thank you very much. And that brings us to item E, which I think we are all very excited about and for.
So I'd like to propose that we change Dr. Erickson's job title from Director of Curriculum Instruction and Technology to Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. The change in title is really just that. Dr. Erickson has been carrying out the duties of Assistant Superintendent for several years. I think it's appropriate that we make the change. In your background, I have included a job description for the new, for the, for the new position. That job description is aligned and similar to the previous job descriptions of the curriculum director and the, there's actually, in the past, there's been a couple, the position's had a couple of different names over the year, as years. It's been Director of Curriculum, Director of Curriculum Instruction, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Technology. So the new job description is consistent with those previous positions. And ultimately, it's, I really do see this as not really a change in roles, but a change in, in title only. So not a major change in roles and responsibilities for Dr. Erickson. I do want to note that the creation of the title of Assistant Superintendent is solely at the discretion of the school committee. So I, as the superintendent, I cannot create the position of Assistant Superintendent. That has to be done by the school committee. And with the school committee's recommendation, sorry, I said that wrong. Upon the superintendent's recommendation, the school committee appoints the Assistant Superintendent. So my recommendation for tonight is I, I make a proposal that we create the title of Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. And if the school committee vote to appoint Meredith Erickson into that position. And I'll open up to any questions at this time.
I will gladly make the motion. I move that we create the title of Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning and to appoint Dr. Meredith Erickson into the position.
Second.
Excellent. Does anyone have any questions? How about comments?
Well deserved.
Well deserved. Absolutely.
Right? Thank you. Okay, so let's, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye. That was a good aye.
That was a good one.
You loved it all.
That was a good aye.
Right?
You're okay, Dr. Erickson. You're okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you so very much for your efforts, your dedication. I mean, the patience that you have with answering all of our questions when we email you or when we call you. We so appreciate your dedication. So we are blessed to have you in our district. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Dr. Erickson.
Yes, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
She's actually blushing. I love it.
I'm afraid if you do that, the access point will go down, so don't touch it.
Couple items for this evening.
Yes, only a few more.
We're almost there.
We're almost there.
And moving on to recreation committee appointments. Mary Ross and Carl Miller have both expressed interest in staying on members of the recreation committee. Mary and Carl have served the committee for several years. Motion and vote is needed to reappoint Mary and Carl, and I would recommend that the committee do that.
I move to appoint Mary Ross and Carl Miller to the Carver Recreation Committee.
Second.
It's like a race now.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Just want to say thank you very much to Mary Ross and Carl Miller for their continued service and serving on the Carver Recreation Committee. I know they have lofty plans going forward, so I'm excited to see what's next for recreation. So, thank you. And that brings us, oh, are we doing the second reading?
Yep.
Okay.
So, second reading of policy IKF graduation requirements. At our last meeting in May, the Middle High School Guidance Council's Christine McKenna and Christina Nolan presented the proposed revision to our graduation policy. After the first reading, the committee did not have any specific recommendations for changes to the proposed policy. It's my recommendation that we have a motion to vote to approve the updated graduation policy as presented this evening. I'll put it up on the screen for people to review quickly. But as I said, Christine, Christina gave us a pretty thorough presentation last time. And at the time, the committee didn't have any specific questions or recommendations for changes to their, their recommendations. And this was, you know, just made for policy current with where we currently stand. And I actually added a couple additions like the, the Visually Performing Acts, two semesters as a graduation requirement.
Okay.
I move to approve policy IKF graduation requirements as presented this evening.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Excellent. Moving right along to field trips.
So we have two groups who are interested in doing, well, overseas or out-of-country field trips. And so Europe has brought their trip forward for the spring of two thousand twenty-four. We'll just make a note that I know that just recently, I don't know, I forget if it was the April or the May meeting, we approved the, the committee approved the trip for two thousand twenty-three. That trip actually sold out very quickly. They put it out and it quickly turned over and. But I wanted to make a point that, you might be concerned that we're talking about a trip that's two years from now. They'll be happening in May of, I mean, April of two thousand twenty-four. And I went back to the advisors and talked to them about that a little bit, and they reminded me that this is the process they used to follow historically. They would always look to get approval for the trip two years out in May or June. And they would, what will happen is if the school committee does approve it tonight, they'll offer this trip out to current ninth and tenth graders. And then in the fall, in September, they'll offer it out to current eighth graders who come to the high school. And then for some reason, if the trip didn't fill, later at the end of next year, they would offer it out to current seventh graders who, who know they're gonna be coming to the high school. Ultimately, it just gives people the opportunity to pay over time. So it gives families, because these trips are expensive. I believe the cost of this one is?
Thirty-six hundred.
Six hundred, yeah, thirty-six hundred dollars. So it does give families that opportunity to pay over time. All the payments go through the travel company. The school district does not receive any of that money. The travel company does have options for, you know, you can cancel by a certain date and get a refund. You can buy trip insurance if you go past that date. So the families, when they sign up, are aware of the constraints of the, you know, their opportunities to receive their money back if something changed over the next two years. And we also just feel like it is reasonable to only offer it to students right now who are currently in the high school and feel confident that they'll be there two years from now. But this is actually the, this is the procedure we followed prior to COVID in terms of offering out the trips. And obviously, COVID changed that a little bit because, you know, the two thousand twenty trip didn't happen.
It was hard to plan a month away. Never mind two years.
So that changed the whole planning. COVID changed the whole planning process in terms of trips. And interestingly enough, our trips usually don't sell out quite honestly. And so, you know, sometimes, some members of the people who went this year added on the last couple of months. So, but I don't know if it's just more of an interest because of COVID, because we haven't been doing these things, that the trip really actually sold out very quickly the last one. The second one is the Bahamas trip. So the Bahamas trip is a trip we have done. I would honestly say the last time we did it was maybe the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. It was not planned for the summer of COVID, so we didn't have one approved for summer of two thousand twenty. It's a trip that's been done, we've gone several times, I would say, at least five times if not more on this specific trip. And the teachers actually organized the majority of this trip. So I, I recommend both of them. I think they're great opportunities for students. And I leave it to the, to the committee if they'd like to support that.
I'll move to approve the trip to London and Dublin for April of two thousand twenty-four and the trip to the Bahamas for June of two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, my apologies. That brings us to reports from the school committee. Woo, we made it to the final stretch. I don't know if anyone has anything left to say, but you're more than welcome to.
I'll lead us off. I'll keep it brief. There is eight and a half days of school left. I was saying nine, but Ms. Johnson corrected me. Eight and a half. And so I just hope that our students can stay focused and while having fun in the last days, that there's lots of good things coming up. I hope everybody enjoys these last days and has a very safe, fun, and healthy summer. And that everyone's able to relax and as we prepare for an exciting fall. So that, it's been a lot of wonderful things happening, you know, the baseball team. Do, do we know how they did on Saturday in Hopdell?
Yeah, they made it to the final eight, but they lost Saturday three to nothing in Hopdell.
Well, great run. Great run, Carver Baseball. You know, we've had a really great year with a lot of great things. And so, congrats to everybody for eight and a half days we'll have made it through the school year.
Nice. I'll, I'll follow up. I, I just want to, you know, say we're thankful and so appreciative for all those informative presentations and all the positive recognitions. It's, you know, it's the, those are the great parts about these meetings. And I am thankful we got through the year. I think it was a successful year, a building year. And I just wish everyone a wonderful end of the year and happy summer. Stay safe.
I feel like I am ending my second meeting on a very high note. And I'm actually, as someone that works with special ed students and is a lover of literature and books, I'm super excited about the implementation of your new meeting program. And I'm excited I get to watch it grow.
Well, first I want to thank everybody that we recognize tonight for coming. Congratulations, great achievements. And I'm very pleased that we are having more events that are open to family and moving forward in a positive way. I do want to shout out to the Crusaders baseball team because though they didn't win on Saturday, they did make Carver history, athletic history, by even making it to the playoffs. I guess I believe they're the first team that has ever done so in Carver history. Or so I've been told.
The baseball?
The baseball team, yeah. No?
Yeah, I, I can't let, so we did actually win the state championship.
When was that?
Yeah, back in, I don't know, I have to look up the year, two thousand, two thousand one. So yes, we've actually had a state championship baseball team. First time they made the tournament in a while.
In the tournament in a while, like quite a while.
I'm sure, I don't know if there's people out there who played on the two thousand one, two thousand two championship. Hey, we won the state championship.
Yeah. I thought it was like twenty years. It's been like twenty years. I'm very proud of them regardless. I also want to thank the DEI committee for the presentation. I am very proud of the work that the DEI committee is doing. And while, you know, not everything was executed perfectly, we are learning. We're growing together. And I think we've gained a lot of valuable information that we can use to continue to support all of our students and make sure that they are healthy, happy, and included in our school community. And I want to thank everybody who are part of the negotiations. I think that was a great accomplishment, accomplishment tonight. I'm very pleased that we were able to vote on that and ratify and make sure that that was all signed and ready to go. And again, eight and a half days left to school. Thank you to all of the teachers and staff and administration for everything they've done. This has been an extraordinary couple of years that we've had to work through. And I think they've done an amazing job with that. And I'm, I'm very pleased at the progress that has been made. And again, that we're moving forward with positivity. And happy summer. I hope all of you enjoy your break.
Right, yeah, I echo everyone's sentiments. So much to be thankful for, so much to be proud of. I know there were still some events coming up, some additional recognitions that will be happening for students going forward during those last eight and a half days. I too am very grateful and very thankful to see so many people in person and smiling faces and families celebrating convocation and concerts. And just seeing some kindness. I do want to give a shout out to the elementary school. I believe it was the fourth grade that had a concert last week that was put on by the middle high school band. And as Mr. Tunis was narrating their presentation, he asked for two volunteers from the audience to get up and to help him. One was using his baton and the other was keeping time by marching. And I have to say that kids raised their hands. And when he picked a student, all of the students sitting there that didn't get selected clapped for both of those students. It literally brought tears to my eyes to see them like celebrating someone getting chosen. And it just, it just gave me such, such appreciation and awareness for that, you know, be kind and the kindness campaign that they're, that they're running there, which, you know, was the theme in one of the survey questions in the DEI survey. And it was just really, a really powerful moment. So I just had to give kudos because that was just so great to see. I wish that throughout the entire world, people could do more celebrating of others. So anyway, I just want to say that I'm, I'm thankful for that. It was, it was very special and I found it to be very, very touching. And happy summer. Oh, my gosh, I can't believe it's like hap- happy summer. Thank you to everyone for their hard work. And with that, if anyone would like to make a motion to adjourn.
I just want to clarify my feelings just because I want to make sure my information's out there.
Did you look it up?
Quick Google search, Carver lost in the state championship six to two in nineteen ninety-nine, but they were in the, Carver baseball team was in the, was in the state. You're, you're a senior, they went to the state.
They went to the state?
Lost, lost the state championship.
They lost.
They were runners-up. There was a state championship game, but lost six to two.
Who was the coach?
It was a quick Google search. I don't remember who the coach was.
Thank, thank you for that.
I remember when Dennis Green, and I was ninety-six.
It might have been Dennis. It's a good chance it was Dennis Green.
Now you're just making me feel old, seriously. Yeah, now you're just making me feel old, seriously. Eighty-nine, eighty-nine.
Hey, Kelly, I'm not trying to.
Something with a nine.
No, 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 that's fine. I'm glad for the clarification, because I am not a sports person, um, trying to be supportive. Um, but somebody had, did tell me that this was like the first time.
They probably didn't live in town in ninety-nine.
No, I did not. And I'm willing to admit when I'm wrong, so if I'm wrong, great, but I still think they did an amazing job. It was a great team.
They did.
That's, I'll, I'm not, it doesn't produce a season at all. And uh, it just shows that maybe I, I.
Yes, thank you for that. Thank you for that fact checking.
Your memory is amazing.
I mean, just to, right, just to think, how easy was that with Google versus when we were all in school and we'd have to go look up the yearbook, right? To like look at pages and like see how far we've come, even though our, our technology problems, so anyway.
I.
Motion to adjourn.
Going to make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you for bearing with us with all of our technological challenges.
Not that we're like in any rush to get it.
Not at all.
Hey, we made it before eleven o'clock.
Well, my phone did, did tell me that it's time for me to go to bed, so.
No executive, no executive session.
No executive session.